Steve.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Ken.
Yeah.
Prove the agenda.
Move, move, move again.
A second.
For the discussion. Doug.
Yes.
Ken.
Yeah.
Sue.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
On to Citizens Forum. Man, go ahead and hit it.
Deb, let's save you some time.
This looks to be going into a state church name in your address, please.
Suzie Lovey C two oh one Woodlawn Maxwell Iowa.
Thank you.
Um, just want to take a few minutes and make a proposal to the council to maybe look into a change for Old Settlers Committee and who currently runs it or for next year. Nothing for this year, obviously. I've been on the committee. I know that it takes forever to get that stuff done. But I'm sure you guys have heard complaints, comments, things going around about how people would like a change. I have had the pleasure of being on many committees and groups over the years. I've been a volunteer. I have been on Old Settlers. I've been Mother's Sub. I'm currently on EMS and Fire. I know how the crap works. I know that you're never going to make everybody happy, but they currently do not have any public meetings. They don't post when their meetings are. And if you ask, they won't tell you or they won't respond. So all these other people want to join, help, volunteer, and they're not allowed to do so. Um, no, I do not want to run it in any way. I have nothing desired. I have done my time. I mean, I would help if they needed some help or knowledge on things, but this is nothing that I want to do. Um, I did do an online survey and got like hundred and thirty-six signatures to saying that they would like the current members to sit down, the current officers. Again, this is a hundred and forty, not very scientific because my husband signed from his phone and obviously didn't show up. Some people's login show from Omaha and I think it's where they're logged in on the internet, so I wouldn't take it with a grain of salt. I know it doesn't reach everybody. My mother doesn't have internet, so she wouldn't sign it even if I asked her to. So that's just people are ready for a change. There, the current OS is, committee is not the greatest at welcoming or working with others, as you guys have seen in previous things. Um, I would like the council to either look at not allowing next year, if the no changes happen, to let them the use of the park, deny beer permit, deny parade permit unless something happens and they start having open meetings. I have offered, for the last year, we have offered use of the MAC for free for the Old Settlers Committee to come in and use. I know that they tried to have a meeting a year ago at the, I don't remember who it was. Fire station. Yes, I saw the video. Yes, I saw what happened and I know that you can't have that either. Uh, we would still offer the meeting place even if the current Old Settlers Committee stays on, but we would like them to come down as officers and let new people in. I would think that this could happen. If, if that doesn't happen, then I suggest that the city takes over celebration, much like how you guys have your parking rec, your EMS association, your Maxwell Fire Association, your library association, your friends at the library. No money in the budget. I get that. You don't have money to put into that. They still operate under their own five oh one C three. You still have volunteers, but it's under the city because you guys provide insurance for certain aspects of it, so why not have it under the city? And then you have a way of people's contacting if they want to know, hey, who do I contact? They can contact Deb, which Deb, sorry, I don't want to make more work for you, but. So, uh, again, we still offer the use of the MAC. You can't expect new people or current townspeople to get excited about a small town celebration if it's the same thing over and over. Change is sometimes a good thing. The future always is in the hands of the youth. Yes, I know they still need guidance from even who's on the committee. Wouldn't ever say that they couldn't totally go away, but they just have to be work, willing to work with others. Play nice in the sandbox, please. And then on a side note for the personal, my personal opinion for fireworks, I would suggest they don't during Old Settlers, but Old Settlers Committee, look into having them for Fourth of July. Started as a Fourth of July kickoff fundraiser, like how they used to have, but was it the Lions Club did the? Okay, something along those lines. Make the hype up around town. We don't have much. You don't have anything bringing people into town. It's just an easy thing. And then the comment also that Old Settlers has nothing to do with the rodeo or the truck pulls. I believe if I was on the rodeo or the truck pulls committee, I would have been a little hurt because you guys wouldn't have Old Settlers if you didn't have those committees. And for those people that put in the time and effort in those committees, it probably would hurt your feelings if you think that you, your opinion is it doesn't have anything to do with Old Settlers. Old Settlers is a town celebration. It's for groups. And if you didn't have the groups doing other things, you'd have a parade, a beer tent, and a raffle. All I want. So, and I know you can't vote. I know, been there, done that. No, you can't vote. It was just an opinion. So, thank you.
I have questions for you. Were you at the public meeting that we tried to have at the fire station?
So I saw the video.
The video didn't nearly show what happened at that meeting. And Steve can attest to that.
I haven't seen the videos.
Well, but you know what happened at the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And that is the reason why do we have to have a public meeting if we don't get volunteers?
How can they volunteer if they don't respond?
All they have to do is contact the committee.
They have.
The committee has asked for volunteers for several years, but I know.
And no one responds. Because if she doesn't want them, she won't answer or comment.
It's not, she's not the only one. You are referring to Becky, I assume.
Main one, yeah.
She doesn't have the total say so. And there is a board of directors. There are no members. So how would Old Settlers invite people in?
When someone says I'd like to attend a meeting, when's your next meeting? I ask.
They don't have regular meetings.
So then how do you do things?
How do you do things except what, the changes that need to be made? I know last year Mitzi made many changes. The year before, she made changes. So I don't know where you're getting that information.
I said, how do you make changes? So if somebody wants to volunteer to do something, but you don't have a meeting, how do you do that?
You just call someone on the committee.
They're not published, except for the phone number to the.
Do you know who's on it?
Currently, right now, she hasn't updated the, I'm not going to say it right. Whatever it is for nonprofit, because she still has the people listed as board members that resigned in August of last year.
So do you have their numbers?
They resigned.
Could you contact any of them? Could you contact any of them?
I said, I don't want to be on the committee. I'm trying to offer a solution for the people that want the change.
Okay.
I've offered them use of the MAC. I don't know what your fire station has anything to do with that.
Why do you want the change?
Uh, I'm trying to be polite here, but people's comment says it sucks. There's nothing to do. They would like more activities. They would like more activities and.
There have been many more activities added.
What?
But the people aren't coming.
And Deb has a lot to do with the personnel. Anyway, I offered the MAC. I don't know what your fire station meeting has to do with that. If anybody wants to use the MAC for an Old Settlers meeting, they're welcome to. I asked to go to the South Story Pullers meeting. They said I was more than welcome to. Told me the next time if I wanted to come. I don't want to join. I was just asking. I asked, uh, the Old Settlers, not Old Settlers, rodeo committee, if I could come to their next meeting. He said, sure, I'll let you know when they're coming. So the other people have meetings.
Meetings as such.
Okay, so that was why I proposed the city be in charge of it, so then you have a meeting.
It hasn't been necessary.
Okay.
They have worked things out with the four people on the committee. Do you want to do this? I think we could do this. I think we could do that.
Sue, can you tell me the four members on the committee?
The four members on the committee?
Yeah.
Well, I know the ones that resigned.
No, I want to know who the four members are. In case I want to get a hold of one, I need, I have no idea who.
Mitzi.
Mitzi here last month said that she is no longer on.
That's right. She resigned.
Okay, so who is on the committee?
Call Becky, pointer. Go with the flower shop. That's how you can get a hold of number one. Number two, Roger was on and Muskie resigned.
So there's one.
Okay. No, two, because as far as I know, Roger did not resign.
Okay.
And Darren resigned because he only got on there because of Mitzi. And there was a problem with the changes that were wanted to be made. And there was one person who did not agree to that. And that is why the resignation.
So as a five oh one point three C, whatever it is. There are rules to having, be able to have that, correct?
Correct.
And one of them is being, having meetings regularly, I believe.
Or posted or asked, then you're invited to the next one.
There's a requirement that you have an annual meeting.
Yeah.
An annual meeting. Okay, so an annual meeting. And then I'm sure there's got to be a president, vice president, secretary.
You're getting in way too far. Like, I mean, I've helped set up lots of things, but like for the MAC, yeah, we have that.
But there should be a report available to anybody.
EMS and Fire.
Since it's a, well, it should be a report available to anybody.
Yeah, it's a file of nine oh something. I'm not going to, I've got it, I don't know what it is. You file it and it lists who your president is, the mailing address or whatever. So like, I'm on.
So, so what I'm saying is there should be a report of the annual meeting somewhere that states.
Who it is, or you can provide it if somebody asks.
And whatever else. So it should be provided if asked.
Yeah, yeah. Like the MAC, we only usually hold one in-person meeting a year for board members, but we have our events crew that does stuff for our fundraising and stuff like that. Yeah, and then we'll do that. But if somebody asks, I'll tell you, hey, this is what our next meeting is, and if you'd like to come, please do so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Suzie, I did ask you, why do you want the change?
I'm just offering a, a help between all of the hundred mil plus people.
But what, where were they when people were asked to volunteer to help with the beer tent, to help with the cleanup?
I was at the meeting and we volunteered. And we were told that in order to get any sort of say in what was going to go on, we had to be on for a year. When in fact, there were so, several members who had been on for only a couple of months that were holding office.
I have the constitution, if you want. It doesn't say that they have to be a member for a year.
I know. That was a whole thing and it's in that video. But I'm just speaking on your question of where were you. I was there along with thirty other people. And that meeting got shut down. Then there was a secret meeting that nobody knew about and things were done there.
Not a secret meeting.
Well, that's on your own opinion.
No, that was not a secret meeting.
This is outside the scope of the city. So if there's any further on the, I appreciate what you have.
I'm just trying to pass along, like I said, I did do an, uh, monkey survey. Um, it was most, two people out of the eighty plus that responded to the survey said that they didn't see any reason for the change. All the other people said, uh, more events, more youth, um, leadership involved, uh, just basically they just wanted an overall change and more public, basically more open access is basically, that was the biggest thing that everybody wanted. And somebody wanted, uh, Bingo back. That was a big thing. And Bingo, three people wanted Bingo. So whoever, anybody happens to get on the Old Settlers Committee or if it does make a change, then they should look into Bingo because apparently that's what we popular. So that's all I wanted.
I'm just a newcomer up here. I'm, I'm just, this is, I'd like to say something. My name's Cindy James. I live at six nineteen Maxwell Street. I lived here twenty-five years and I'm just appalled from the rumors that I hear here in the city limits of Maxwell. It's supposed to be a friendly place. And I'm hearing that people are calling the cops or people stealing fences down at the, um, Old Settlers. On a person that runs Old Settlers. I mean, why is people fighting over fences? You know, I think it's sad that people are trying to have a family picnic and a gathering and a town social and people are fighting and calling the cops on people. That's what I have heard in the community of the Old Settlers. I think that people need to join each other and get together and say, let's do this this summer. Let's do that instead of fighting and calling cops on people. I don't want to hear that in our community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question? The four, uh, the four, oh, Rich Wurman, seven oh nine Maxwell Street.
Thank you.
Um, if it's a five oh one C, five oh three, whatever it is, while they are required to hold at least an annual meeting, I, and I'm on your side, but, uh, I don't think they're required to make it a public meeting or that, if it's a nonprofit. So if this, from her pers, from Suzie's perspective, if the Maxwell name is on it, I think at some point one could argue the city does or should have some control over the celebration.
Mm-hmm.
Is the Old Settlers Committee.
That's the story for you, Deb.
It's called the Old Settler, it is called the, well, completely the Old Settlers Steering Committee, but they're calling it the Maxwell Old Settlers Celebrations. I don't know how you legalize it.
I pulled up the Maxwell Old Settlers Steering Committee.
Yeah.
Uh, on Secretary of State website. Um, it's showing Carol Laffey as the president, showing you as the secretary.
There was one.
And it's showing the person that used to live at my address. That position did not transfer over. I'll just let you know that. But according to this document, it was administratively dissolved in two thousand and eleven.
You're looking at the wrong one.
Yeah, that would have been when, uh, Randy had it. I don't remember the years. I was on it for two, four years, two, four years.
There, but that one was dissolved and another one was created after.
And I think for people's perspective too, as a member, they don't have to have a, a public meeting, but all these other people that used to serve on Old Settlers Committee, we always advertised when the meeting was because you never know who's the ones that volunteered, who wants to help with something. So they always advertised when the meetings were, um, when I was on it for several years. I, I don't know who had it before that. I think it's been a long time. I haven't been to Old Settlers for a very long time, so, but that was when we were on it.
If they have the use of the park, which obviously they do, then I go back to, shouldn't the city have some say?
The city does have a say in the use of the park. We have the say in permitting of beer permits. They also have a say in the, um, fireworks displays. Those are the three things that the city has. I wrote all three of those down.
Suzie, there were no public meetings after the one at the firehouse because of the behavior of the three or more people that were at the back that were up and screaming and yelling and everybody.
I understand that that was a year plus ago. I'm talking about recently when people wanted to join, so.
But that is the reason there were no more public meetings.
After that, the use of the MAC was offered and not taken up on, so.
I had no idea. Mitzi had no idea.
It was out there on Facebook.
Okay, but there is.
Mitzi knows because what she's saying, she can't wait till she leaves this godforsaken town and she'd never go to a public meeting again. So Mitzi knows. Yeah, she told me that. I don't know.
You know what she's been up through?
Who hasn't gone through tragedy and turmoil in their life?
Three years of going through cancer treatment and losing everything with her husband.
Oh, hello. I haven't had that with my father-in-law, my mother-in-law, and my dad. Everybody has that. So.
Suzie, what I'm saying is there were no public meetings because of that.
We're going to go back to Citizens Forum.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything else in Citizens Forum?
I do. Alex Golly, eight hundred Baldwin Street. Under, from what I've been hearing, the new construction for Baldwin's coming, right? Has the city thought about or done any looking into possibly putting a stop sign, like they're doing a three-way stop? I know since we've lived there, just over here.
Three-way stop where?
North Street and Baldwin Street, right at the cemetery. That the whole speed limit coming in and out of town is merely a suggestion.
Pot holes.
And I'm afraid especially, and you know, we have, at the moment, we have kind of built in.
Going to be the Autobahn.
I, I think that's a good suggestion for when the project is completed.
Okay, does that, is that just through you guys?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect, that's all? Is that still projected to start in July?
Yeah.
The project?
They're running the clock right now in reality.
Are they?
Yeah, it started Monday.
They, they can, the clock started Monday. They have a certain number of days to complete the project. They can start as late as they want to, as long as they can get done within that time period or pay penalties.
Okay. Awesome. That's all. Thank you, guys.
I think it's seventy-five days.
Seventy-five days?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do they have any more in the Woodlawn Lake project?
Uh, we do have a little bit.
You mean Riverland?
Here shortly.
Lake Lovey, Lake Coria out back?
Is that?
We get to the interior.
Oh.
Is mine part of the Citizens Forum or something else?
Oh, okay. I didn't know if I needed this present for.
All right. Anything else for Citizens Forum? Perfect. All right, on to the public hearing.
Thank you.
Will we open the public hearing?
Second.
For the discussion. Sue? Joel?
Yes.
Karen?
Yeah.
Doug?
Yes, Steve.
Yes.
Public hearing is now open. The first reading of amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Maxwell pertaining to water service rates and sewer service rates. The ordinance reads to be modified, section ninety-two point oh two, according to, uh, Code of Ordinances for the City of Maxwell's repealed in the following adoption and lieu thereof. Service, the water service shall be furnished at the falling rates within the city. Service charges fixed rate, customer service charge of twenty-seven dollars a month. Minimum bill shall be charged despite any temporary absence of the customer. Usage charge, variable rate of metered service figured on each gallon used. Water usage rate, two dollars per thousand. Water used for outside purposes only shall be registered on the outside meter and will be billed at the falling rate. And we'll start up free fee, ten dollars. All water used per month on outside meter, two dollars per thousand. Excuse me. Bulk sales, all bulk sales, one dollar per hundred gallons. Um, section modified, section ninety-nine point zero one, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Maxwell, Iowa, is repealed and adopted, following adopted and lieu thereof. Ninety-nine point zero one, rates for service. Each customer shall pay sewer charges, service charges for the use and for the service supplied by the municipal sanitary sewer system based on the amount of water consumed as follows. The service charge is fixed rate, customer service charge of sixty-seven dollars per month is the minimum bill shall be charged despite any temporary absence of the customer. Usage charge, variable rate figured on each gallon based on the amount of water consumed, excluding metered water for outside purposes. The sewer usage fee is six fifty per one thousand gallons. And there's a separability clause. Any section provision or any part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional shall adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section provision or part of, not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional.
Any comments?
Any comments? Sorry, thank you.
And will we close the public hearing?
Sorry. Further discussion?
What is the difference between what was charged and what is charged now?
Deb, do you have that handy?
Um, water, the fixed rate was twenty-four. And the, um, variable was a dollar eighty. On sewer, the fixed was sixty-two. And the variable was five dollars per thousand.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion?
Is this something we can waive, the second or third reading?
Yes.
Yes, the second.
I published it that night.
You did publish that one, okay. So I move we approve the ordinance and waive the second and third hearings.
Second.
Did, did you guys take a vote for closing?
No. We were still in discussion.
All right, sorry.
We're awake. Thank you. Sue?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Doug?
Yes.
All right.
Now I make the motion.
Second.
Further discussion? Ken?
Yes.
Sue?
Let me take a little bit more, keep going.
Joel?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
I'm motion carries.
What's the ordinance number going to be, Deb? If you have any, no, don't know off the top of your head, that's fine. Just let me know later.
Okay.
I would like to move, uh, departmental reports down, uh, to before the council and mayor reports. Since we have individuals here who are interested in, uh, business items. Second.
Further discussion? Joel?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
On to business discussion action on rat sanitation.
That's me, I guess.
Judging from your hair.
Well, I didn't wear the shirt to you. Uh, so I'm here for a couple of reasons. First, oops. There's quite a bit going on at the City of Ames, uh, which you guys have, uh, let me just take one, pass it down.
Yeah.
Uh, quite a bit going on over at City of Ames regarding you guys' twenty-eighty agreement with them as far as disposal and all that. Not sure if you've heard much of that. Um, first and foremost, uh, big, big rate increase, uh, for disposal. Uh, City of Ames is, uh, going from sixty-two dollars and fifty cents per ton to seventy-five dollars per ton effective July first. Uh, so that's a twenty percent increase in our disposal, uh, cost, uh, to get rid of the trash, so. Um, per our contract, uh, our, that's our, that's our only, uh, mechanism of price increases is if the City of Ames increases their tipping fee. It's supposed to be an equal percentage rate. I'm going to sit here and tell you, I can't in good faith raise your rate twenty percent. But the fact of the matter is, um, I, I've got to get something to cover that extra cost that we're going to incur. I, I, I'm looking at ten percent on, on the garbage, uh, the garbage rate increase. Uh, that should cover our increase on the, uh, that should at least cover the tipping fee portion of that. So the little handout that I gave you there, although not a, a true service proposal because we're still under contract, um, does show you, uh, what, what the current rate is. Um, it's about fourteen twenty-eight, uh, per house. Um, ten percent increase would get you to fifteen seventy. The extra cart cost is not going to, is not going to change. As far as I know, our count for extra carts is fairly accurate. Haven't done an audit on that recently, but it kind of just is what it is. So, um, we'd be looking at a four hundred, or about a four hundred dollar a month increase on the garbage bill. So again, ten percent. It's never, never something that I love to, uh, come and ask you to, to get more money, but at the same time, it's business, so. Right now, uh, so that's number one. And I guess that's really kind of coming regardless, uh, because that's what the contract states. So I'm not going to do the twenty percent like the contract states. I'm going to do ten percent. So that said, we are getting to the point where our contract's going to be coming up to an end. Uh, and it's November the thirtieth of this, of this year, so we're really only five months out from that. Um, so I think we do a pretty good job for you guys. Um, we don't get a lot of complaints on our end. I don't think Deb gets a lot of complaints on her end. Um, I would like to, the city would like to just go ahead and re-sign a contract dated, uh, the effective date being December first, two thousand and twenty-four, uh, with the new rate being the baseline for that, so.
What duration are you thinking for a contract?
Uh, five years.
Five.
So, yeah, we had three-year contract. Um, I, I always, I feel like a three-year contract to start something is, is, uh, a good starting place and hopefully we've built a rapport with you, with the city and, uh, we've done a good enough job that we'd like to do an extended contract this time, so.
Yeah, one question for you.
Yeah.
Um, we got a small letter here from the City, the City of Ames. It doesn't say your start line. In fact, ours doesn't include the cops either. It just says, we'll let you know.
Yeah, yeah, well, the price increase came, uh, kind of. Yeah, yeah, well, the price increase came kind of, they didn't really even affect, they didn't tell us. All they did was shove it into their, their annual report and it, they didn't even actually let the hollers know. It was just in their annual report that July first was the date for the price increase, so.
Their letter also talks about separation of the waste.
There's a lot coming from the City of Ames. I, I'm happy to hash some of it out with you guys right now. I don't know how imperative it is because some of that's probably down the road, but the city is probably probably gonna go away from waste to energy. That seems to be, if you're not aware, they run the burn plant up there. There's no recycling in, in, in Sora County if you're a member of the Ames Waste Planning Zone, which you guys are. They are deciding right now, have been over the course of the last couple of years whether or not they're gonna continue either retrofitting their current facility, building a new facility, or get out of the waste to energy facility business period. If they get out of that, we're, we're probably gonna be sitting here when that happens and we're gonna be talking about state mandated, state mandated recycling, it'll be gonna have a service, it'll be, you know, blah, 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 but again, it's probably not something we need to have a big talk about right now, but maybe something that the council should be having an eye on for the future. I just did this up in McCall'sburg last week, they were, they seem to be pretty interested in the topic and, and, you know, it may be something that you guys, I wouldn't, I'm no lawyer, but I would assume that if they go away from their current system, you guys would have a way out of your twenty-eighty agreement, would be my guess. Then you may want to look at alternative options as far as disposal, Marshall County, Hardin County, somewhere else, you know, metro waste authority. But again, probably a, a larger topic for another day, so.
So we don't know when the Ames is going to increase their rate by twenty percent?
According to their annual report, July first.
So it already happened?
As far as I know. So I haven't got my July statement yet, so I won't get that till the end of July, so.
And so if they have increased their cost for tipping, we pay Ames a certain amount of money.
Yes, you pay per capita? Yep.
On a per capita basis?
Yep.
And that doesn't change?
Probably not until you sign a new twenty-eighty agreement.
The tipping fee, however, if that has gone up twenty percent, then according to the existing contract, you would have the right to pass that on to us.
Correct, correct. An equal percentage to what they raised, so.
Right. And you're electing to only go up ten percent?
Yes, all I.
And that would go, and that would be in effect with the next bill?
If indeed they actually raised the, I mean, I, we were told per the annual report. We haven't been told otherwise. We will see probably on, on the next bill whether or not. I mean, I'm okay with working with the city that, hey, I won't do that until that actually takes place. If indeed it's not this month, but I don't have any reason to believe that they're not doing that this month at, at this rate, so.
Okay, because usually it takes about forty-five days between starting an ordinance amendment and actually getting the ordinance amended.
Sure.
Collect, using a fee that is in the ordinance.
Yeah, I don't know if that's an ordinance thing with them or if it's just.
Oh, I'm sure it's not, but you turn in a bill that's ten percent higher, we pay the bill.
Sure.
But it's not sustainable to continue paying ten percent higher and not passing.
Unless you guys pass an ordinance to, to update the, the, yeah.
And the earliest that that could take effect now would probably be the October bill. So as soon as you find out whether or not you're getting a higher charge and letting Deb know that our bill has gone up, then we will have to start our process of rate increases.
Sure.
Or, yeah.
Well, and like I said, I'm, I'm happy to make it effective whenever it's truly effective. All I know is, is, is per their annual report, they said July first, so.
Okay.
So I, I'm happy to be open and honest with you guys about that and, and work with you on that. I'm happy to call, do what I can to see if I can get, get ahold of the people at the city to make sure that that's actually happening if I need to. Pass that information along to Deb. You guys just have one, I'm afraid, or you have two.
We try to have one.
Sure, sure.
Off and on.
Yeah, I would move that we invite Pratt sanitation to propose a con, five-year contract for, starting December first, with the understanding that nobody knows what's gonna go into it because it may involve separation of the waste stream, it may involve higher prices.
I think we could word that so that if there's any, if there's any change.
We will, I, I, in, the motion invites you to work on a contract and we have, like you said, five months, four months in order to get it taken care of. But I would be interested in working with you to at least develop a contract.
Does your company offer recycling services?
We don't currently because, because we haven't need to. And there are companies that offer voluntary recycling in the City of Ames and in Nevada. We just, it's always been my, my philosophy that I'm supporting my disposal facility by not taking their waste stream away from them. So, but if we need to, we will. It's, it's pretty simple, you know, we put another truck on the road and give you an extra cart and do the, do the necessary education, you know, to get everybody on board with recycling and hopefully we do it right and go, go about it, so.
Can I get back the paint garbage cans like I have at Jenny?
I don't have any of those, so.
I promised my husband a Cowboys colored one the last time, so.
Well, you wanna buy them? If the city would like to purchase garbage cans, then sure.
You know, garbage is sticky and the paint shivers me, it looks really nice.
We have a motion.
I'll say after.
All right. Any further discussion? Sue?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Joel?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes, Steve.
Yes.
So I will get to work on making that right. I'll get in touch with, with Bill up at the plant and find out exactly when this price increase is taking place and we'll, I'll draft up a contract that has necessary language, so.
Three months from now, if we have, have it, the writing rate.
Sure.
We're interested in continuing service with you, but not guaranteeing that we'll sign the contract.
Yeah, no, I think that's fair. I'm, I'm, I'm just happy to know that you're interested in continuing service with us, so. Yeah, all right, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm gonna get out of here then. You guys have a good night.
You too.
And I didn't see on your service proposal that this is valid for sixty days.
I'm pretty easy to work with, so, you know, nothing's gonna change on that, sorry.
If you don't get a price increase, then we don't get a price increase. Until you get a price increase.
Right. If, if I can, if I can, if, if they're indeed not price increasing this month and I can find out when that's actually gonna take place, if, you know, I, I will pass it on to you guys so that you can do the necessary and get your forty-five days in to, to make the ordinance, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, discussion, action on dog procedures in place. All right, so we have a new amendment to dog ordinance to consider, it was provided by this ordinance. And it was the City of Iowa City Dog Ordinance.
We're gonna put the shade down. Before we open one.
Why don't you put battery operated, the remote ones when you guys are good, send it home.
Wasting public funds like that?
Rich, can you help me understand what it is about the Iowa City ordinance that you find more than a set to be missing from our current ordinance?
Yeah. When I was here last month, I really left disappointed that if I understood the current Maxwell ordinance correctly, either a person or a dog has to be physically injured before we can deem a dog dangerous and do something about it. So it was suggested to me that it would be helpful if I could find a city ordinance that's already written up that would define a dangerous dog differently than what we do. And I just coincidentally, I don't know why I chose Iowa City, but I looked at theirs, it was published, and I noticed they had five definitions of how they can define a dangerous dog. And one of them in particular, the fifth of the, six actually, I've highlighted in red on the second page, and they simply say "an animal that has a propensity to attack or bite humans or animals and that has been shown to exist through one or more attacks or attempted attacks. And where such propensity is known to the owner ought to be reasonably known to the owner thereof." So they don't, none of their six says somebody or some animal has to be hurt in order to deem a dog dangerous and deal with it appropriately. I don't feel, and I've been here forty-five years and owned the dog the entire time, if not two. I don't feel anyone in this city should have to wait for their dog or themselves to be hurt before something is done when a dog, according to this definition, has had one or more attacks. So basically what happens in Iowa City, if a dog has attacked, there is an immediate impoundment. The owner has to pay for all the expenses while it's impounded. The owner then will have a public hearing where the owner and anybody else that wants to put their two cents in as to whether it should be deemed dangerous, has the opportunity to participate in that hearing. The council then, based on their definition on the preponderance of evidence, gets to decide, or the mayor could decide, is this a dangerous dog? And if so, it doesn't say that the dog has to be removed from the city. They give the owner a chance to keep the dog, but if so, the dog has to be neutered or spayed. The dog has to have a microchip implanted and a city tag issued saying this is a dangerous dog. And all of those costs, again, are mandated and have to be incurred by the owner. If they want to keep the dog, they can. They have to do those three things, I don't think that's unreasonable. The city can go beyond that though, and they can, they can define if the dog has to be confined like in a pen as opposed to just on a leash on a squirrely tail thing in the yard. They can require the owner show liability insurance, which I highlighted on page five. I think that's a very good thing to demand. And if none of those conditions are, are agreed upon and the city manager or the council decides, they can then have the dog destroyed. So I shortened it, there, there was umpteen pages, thirteen pages or something, and I shortened it to where I thought the average person could read and understand what we're asking, and so I guess the simple thing for me to do would be to suggest that this section be added that defines the dangerous dog and the consequences thereof. I don't think I want you to totally rewrite the dog ordinance. I just think I want you to redefine dangerous and what happens when and if you do.
All right. Our definition that we have in there talks about any dog with known propensity, tendency, or disposition to attack unprovoked as evidenced by its habitual or repeated chasing, snapping, or barking at human beings or domestic animals so as to potentially cause injury or to otherwise endanger their safety. So we've already got the, with the known propensity.
But cause injury was the part that I'm questioning the fault. I could read that and say, well, my dog, when that dog attacked me, it didn't injure me or my dog. That's not good enough, not my, my. Same dog attacked Cindy and the same dog attacked me. And when the deputy that was here last time went down there, he went down and said the dog didn't react, but I would say, go down there with another dog on the leash and see if that dog reacts and how it does. So I don't, I just really don't want to have somebody come in here and say, why do I have to deal with this injury when, when it's, it's a pretty well-known fact and could be proven that this dog had that propensity.
And also, I feel, I believe when I keep coming to the city hall about the same address, the same owner of the dog, she can't control the dog, and I'm told, try the other way, try this, do that. I should be able to walk on the city streets of Maxwell with my dogs on a leash and not feel threatened when I go upon a corner and a lady purposely just lets the dog run. It's a hundred and forty pounds and it jumped on me and I still have pain on my hip. And I'm saddened because every time I walk the city streets, there are loose dogs. And people say, my dog can be off of a leash. And how can you control the dog when you're standing here and the dog's blocked away? And I believe that you guys should make an ordinance that your dog should be on a leash and in control of the dog. I go to the soccer field, I go to the park. I've been ran out by big dogs, little dogs at both places. And you can ask anybody in the city room at the Maxwell, I've lived for twenty-five years, and I have never once left my yard with my dog off leash. And it is, it's sad. I wanna walk any time of the day and I can't. I walk in the dark because I don't wanna fight with people. That lady down here on the corner has had this big dog for two years and I've been ran out of the soccer field, the tree dump, and the park because she can't handle that hundred and forty pound Rottweiler. I'm not even by her address when this dog's coming at me. I'm around the corner or, oh, the last time I was around the corner, passed almost up to the corner to pass over to the car wash. And the time before that, I was at the museum.
I was in the middle of the street when the same dog came out of the chart and attacked me. One thing my wife asked, what my opinion was gonna be as to whether, if this is passed, if it's retroactive, and I think to make things simpler, I would say, no, I don't, I don't necessarily want to ask for that. In other words, that dog is known to have attacked twice, I'm not gonna, sorry, I'll start with zero on that. Let the owner have, you know, one or two, like, I guess it says one or more. But I would not ask that we have to deal with, you know, retroactively going back to any of those dogs, but I think we need to protect our citizens better than what this ordinance is doing.
And I, before I got attacked the last time by my address. I sent the, I gave the city, the mayor and Dev and Steve Gass video of a dog, a pit bull, attacking a kid with a lab. And then two, one time before the video with the lab. And then I got attacked the third, the third time seeing this with the same dog and the dog wasn't on a leash. And I know that's the past, but I'm saying it shouldn't say "control of the dog." It should say "dog on leash and control of the dog." Because people are running around all over saying, "My dog don't have to be on a leash" when it's wrapped around me and my dog at my feet. I'm, I'm on, my dogs are on a leash.
I don't disagree with that.
I, I just think it's-
Having a dog under control should mean-
On a leash, under control.
Or in your yard if it's fenced in or underground wire or whatever. But you would expect it to be under your control. But when it is loose, out of your property, that's not under control.
So one thing I do see is the state of Iowa actually provides a template for the code of ordinances for cities to amend to their needs. And it looks to me like much of what is in that is directly related to what is in the Iowa City ordinance. But I bring that up simply because it's hard to say, I don't know. See, probably be the one first to really know when was the last time the ordinance was amended. And I'm guessing that our definitions are probably out of date with what's been decided through the state Capitol. Not as far as definitions of dangerous and vicious animals.
It's not just a vicious animal because there's others that run around loose that are perfectly fine, they shouldn't be loose. If you have a dog, if it's out of your house, it should either be in any closure- Okay, well, I just think since we were looking at dog ordinance, I agree it needs to be on a leash.
So what's the procedure? What does it take? If I'm here asking that you guys include this shortened version that I wrote up, is that impossible? What to take if it is possible?
Well, Dick's just pulling at least two public hearings or three public hearings to amend the ordinance.
The way I wrote it up or according to the entire state?
Well, it can't be done the way you read it, wrote it up. And the reason it can't be is because it talks about the chief of police.
I changed that.
And it also talks-
Pardon?
And city manager.
And city manager, well, so we'd have to substitute mayor, we'd have to do a few substitutions. But essentially, it could follow that same format. Yours just deals with dangerous animals.
Yeah.
It doesn't deal with vicious animals. And so the question becomes, do we excise out of the ordinance our vicious animal because it's no longer needed? Or do we leave it in there? If we leave vicious in there, then what you have affects two sections, fifty-seven oh one and fifty-seven oh three. No, fifty-seven oh two and fifty-seven oh four. And fifty-seven oh three is vicious. So it would take some moving things around or deciding whether or not we want to keep the vicious, whether it makes sense to keep vicious in there or not. But what you have certainly could be a basis for adoption. It'd just take a little bit of work. Question that I have is if our ordinance already says that a dog with a propensity or tendency to attack either a human being or a domestic animal is a dangerous animal by definition. And the ordinance says you can't keep a dangerous animal. And it goes on for a process of seizure, impoundment, and disposition of dangerous animals. What are we, what do we not have that we need?
I think there's a disconnect between our contract with Story County Animal Control.
I do too.
They told me somebody or some dog has to be physically injured, what they told me.
Not, not according to our ordinance. Now, we have the animal control contract on the agenda tonight. And if I can dig down to that part. If you'll hang on for just a second. I might go a bit.
And the contract states that it is the animal control officer discretion.
And-
And who is our animal control officer in that?
And perhaps that needs to be discussed with them before we go into a contract discussion. It also has some other provision, let me find that stupid thing. What, what agenda item is it?
It's right after this one.
Oh, so I don't have to dig very deep at all.
Staple packet, yeah.
It'll be right after the picture of the dog.
Used dog, picture. Okay. Animal, it also has a provision in it under section, section two K that says the city, that the animal control officer will send one letter to a resident of the city when requested by the city and only after prior attempts at resolution by the city. What the hell does that mean? What, what prior attempts? When would we have a resolution when Cindy is chased down and toppled by a dog? What? They will not send a letter out until there is a prior attempt by resolution, the attempt at resolution by the city.
I think we need to ask them to follow our code ordinance.
And what if the owner, what if the owner cannot handle the dog? She could not get a hold of the dog. I was trying to hold on to my chewed off and spray the dog. And she was cussing at me so bad, she couldn't even handle the dog. I, I don't know what, what you guys do when a person can't handle the dog and she lets a hundred and forty pound dog out every day.
You've, you've made the point Cindy, we should amend the law so that we require a dog to be on a leash.
Yes.
And be controlled by you. And I think that is a very good amendment. We don't require a leash today.
No.
We should require a leash for all dogs. If the owner can't control it, you know, I know of hundred and twenty pound dogs that are very controllable by voice. If she can't control the dog, then it becomes a dangerous animal. And we have the right through hearing to have it removed from the city.
And if, tell me if I'm interpreting you incorrectly or you incorrectly, but when you guys were reading our current ordinance, I got the feeling you were saying, we have dangerous dogs defined, we have a process. But when we've brought it to the council's attention that we've had attacks, why has nothing been done and based on what the ordinance says should be done?
That's a question for mayor.
And part of that is the expectation of a contract that we have in place with animal control. You know, seeing this contract, we definitely need to revisit that because it's not an acceptable contract.
Okay, I, I will trust you guys will move forward with whatever you need to do. But I hope part of the process ultimately is going to lead to a redefining the dangerous vicious or both, that will allow us to take action similar to what Iowa City is suggesting. Because I thought those were good. They, they said that person can keep the dog under certain conditions. And they said that, you know, things like liability insurance, it hasn't been discussed in anything that you guys have read that we have. And I think that's an excellent idea. Because now I say, well, you can sue a person. Well, good luck. But if they don't have insurance, they'd like getting anything out of them, so.
Well, plus the liability of the city. If we are aware of situation X, Y, and Z.
Yeah, I can agree with that.
And even if you don't go back to past practice, if somebody would get seriously hurt or killed, the city, I could see a lawsuit against the city. You were aware of it?
Yeah.
That dog did kill a cat. And we've had situations in existence already. We have things going on.
That dog killed a cat?
No, a different dog killed, killed the cat. So I could see the city being liable.
Do you have a dog?
Do I have a dog?
Yeah.
Not right now, no.
Only one, probably.
Does your homeowner insurance provide liability for that dog when it's not on your property?
It's never on-
Yes.
Okay, so having a separate requirement for liability may not be onerous because anybody who's a homeowner and has homeowner's insurance would automatically have that.
Some companies don't, they should.
Renters may not. And for those people who do not have homeowner's insurance, requiring a liability insurance would just be an extra rider that they, a rider they'd have to get. And so it would not be terribly onerous.
No, I don't think so. You, you made the assumption that if you own a home, you have homeowner's insurance. I think for a two or three up as they are-
I'm saying that many people have homeowner's insurance and it would be covered. Putting in the ordinance a requirement that there be liability insurance would not be onerous for those people. And for those people who do not have liability insurance, it would still be a fairly minor expense.
Yeah.
How does one, how does one know that if someone has a dog that they have insurance? How does the city cover themselves? I mean, we, we certainly could be proactive and say that you come in and get a license for your dog, you show your proof of insurance and have all that on record. Or we do like speed limits. And you say you've got to- Wait until someone speeds and then-
And then they-
Or we wait until someone-
Get a, get a ticket or-
Yeah. I mean, there's-
Well, if we go back to-
I was just looking at, you know, again, I brought it up last time. We do have an ordinance for dog license required.
Fifty-six oh one.
Right.
And, you know-
And so we, we have, we could put it on a, on the paperwork that they sign when they come in, saying that they have insurance to cover that dog and they understand the liabilities of having that dog.
License records, and then we could just add fifty-six ten that says proof of insurance.
I think the bigger issue is still, because just like making a thousand parking violation rules is enforcement.
Yes.
It's always enforcement. We don't have the resources to enforce dogs, which is why we provided, we reached out, got a service contract with animal control. Animal control contract is not taking care of what we needed to do. And I think we just need to strengthen up this contract. You had a, you made a contact with the sheriff's office as well, right?
Yeah, and I was never informed if the dog does have rabies shots.
Did the sheriff's office never reach back out to you and the sheriff's office didn't give you a copy of the report?
He just gave me the police report and I gave it to Dev, I think, the police report.
And does, when the sheriff comes out and does that, do they turn it over to the animal control to look into it?
And the sheriff has the-
I called animal control.
I thought animal control was the one that came out and did the investigation after the report was made, the sheriff.
Yes, it, it could go either way. The sheriff also has the authority to enforce our ordinance. So the sheriff that was at that house had every ability to take that animal, to take it to the Story County, to put it in and start the process of administrative hearings.
Problem is with, with the county deputies, they don't know the ordinance for every city.
They're not going to-
So they're not going to take the time to read that ordinance for every city in the county.
But the state code defines dangerous animals. That's codes that they can write on their own.
And I would still-
They don't have to know the city.
I still haven't been told if the dog has this rabies shot.
Which would be something that the, the animal control should be looking into. So the sheriff's portion of animal control could then look into that.
And you know, with our licensing required, you know, here, I realize we don't have the people all the time and all that, that can be able to do that. Maybe that's something Story County could be doing. It's, you know, when we register, they have to go through them to give them the information for this stuff, but. Suzie, you were on the council back when the, when the licensing was amended so that people who had chips or who had other licenses didn't have to license with the city. They just have to be able to prove that they were licensed, right?
Yeah, I thought we had leash law and everything, maybe we didn't, under control.
Never, never had leash law.
Did we?
The dog had to be under control.
Going to ask this in my own personal curiosity, we don't, you're not saying that the city can take a dog and tell them to put it down?
No, the city can have, have, have the dog removed from the city.
Okay. My little dog lover, but I don't agree with that one because sometimes it's not the dog's fault, it's the owner's.
Well, they do have-
If it bites somebody, of course they can put it down.
But they do have exceptions to, to being defined dangerous. If it's involved in law enforcement work, if it bites a person who at the time of the attack or bite is engaged in a criminal act, an animal that attacks or bites an animal or to protect a human being, an animal that was unreasonably or deliberately provoked by the person. Those are exceptions to defining it as dangerous. So I thought it was reasonable. I, I was quite pleased with how it read and thought it would be a-
I mean, I know which dog you're talking about because when we've had this thing, thing, we had, got pictures of the dog walking around town. The owner carrying a leash around her neck. I don't know which one you're talking about.
And tying it up here to the Legion and I, I'm afraid even going to the both offices to get my mail. Because it's tied to their-
And rewriting the ordinance.
I do.
I think that's going to be our first-
And talking to Story County.
And story, story control, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, when we get on to the next section of that, I'll put my opinion about that one.
And can I say one more thing about the dog? Soccer field, city park, meet signs, "Dog on leash." Every time I go by on my mower, in my car, on my bike, with my dog, there are dogs running at the city park all the time. And it's sad because I want to bring my grandkids to the city park. I want to feel safe. And it seems like any time of the day I go down there, people's dogs are running loose. And they let the dogs out of a vehicle, let it run along with the park. And then they go park at the dog park area and sit, and then the dog runs to their car and it's ready to go home.
And I've seen that too. We, my, my wife steered me around the city park one night when that dog was loose and the car was parked over there.
Yeah, and it runs to it, yeah?
Um, do we, I know that you got, of course, get the deputies in and you have your leash, or not leash on this, but the dog ordinance. And you have the contract with the thing. and you have the contract with the thing. I know that when we implemented the dog park, that was one of the things that we were pushing to people. But obviously you have to have somebody here to enforce it, to say, if you're gonna run your dog, you have to do it in the dog park inside the fence, otherwise you get a ticket. So, I know that people just don't listen, but.
I do think that's a good idea, since, um, dogs in park must be on a leash.
I've had people yelling at me, they're, they're half a, they're half a block away in the park, yelling at me that their dogs don't have to be on a leash, and they're at me and my dogs.
Okay, you do that without having a leash requirement in the ordinance?
We have to have the ordinance.
Yeah, they have a leash.
Ordinance first.
No.
You don't think so?
I don't. If, you, you can't put a sign up at city parks saying you have to be on a leash if there's nothing in the ordinance that gives you the authority to do that.
Right.
Oh.
So you have to amend it.
The ordinance has to be fixed first.
Oh.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it, it's sort of like going back to the parking. You put up a, uh, fifteen minute parking sign and somebody parks there for half an hour. Uh, anyway, what, unless you, uh, well, that's not a good example.
Gonna have anything.
Well, somebody's there to see it every fifteen minutes. It's, it's the meter, the meter, they'd sit there waiting.
Right.
I know I don't want to speak out of turn, because I know it's not during open forum, but speaking of dog park, and my mind just goes there, because I saw a squirrel. I have in my garage wood cutouts of the dogs. You guys want them for the park fence that's for the dog park? I still have a Great Dane, I think a Basset, and a Beagle. Is there any kids that could paint them? You guys, Tony wants to put them up? I, we found them the other day and I didn't realize that I never brought them all down.
Have you seen Tony grab them?
I'll come, I can do it myself. If they don't want them, I'll take them back, but that's what they were made, my father-in-law made them for the dog park specifically, and I just never brought them back up.
And when you're talking about Story County Animal Control, we have a bad cat problem in this town. And next to the Presbyterian Church at two fifteen Main Street, that lady continues to have nests. And they're taking over the Presbyterian lawn, it's a kitty litter. And I'm counting thirteen adult cats and eight or nine kitties at a time. And we have a cat problem in town. There's too many cats and.
It's not just town, it's the county. County's aware of it.
It, it is, it's horrible.
Fix them, drop them back off.
Oh, that does a lot of good.
So they just come right back.
And there's people that leave their trash cans out all week, and they're jumping in them and eating, and then they go over and poop in everybody's yard. My dogs can't poop in everybody's yard, so why don't we have a cat law and a dog law in town? Cause there's a lot of cats.
I'd say small baby steps for the dog law. Let's work on dogs.
Well, they got a Jeep next to the Presbyterian Church that has sat there over twelve years, and it's got a blanket in there, and it's all nested with kitties.
Is there motion on discussion, action on the dog procedures and complaints?
Well, I, uh, would move that we amend the ordinance to add that dogs must be on a leash and controlled. Uh, and, uh, that, uh, we study whether or not our ordinance is concerning dangerous, uh, dogs is inadequate. I personally do not believe that it is, it says they should, they, if it's a dangerous dog, uh, which has a propensity to attack someone, doesn't have to bite them, it's a propensity, that the mayor can demand that the dog be removed, that the person has the right to require a hearing before the council, and the council will either affirm the mayor's order or not. So there is a process, and the only reason it seems to have failed is because, uh, Animal Control, law enforcement, uh, uh, has failed to follow the ordinance.
What, what is, our ordinance is consequences, and if, after that hearing, it's deemed, yes, this is a dangerous dog, and what does our city then say?
The dog is removed from the town.
The owner doesn't have the right to keep it?
Nope.
Not in Salem?
Nope. It's gone. Then we can change it if you don't agree, but.
Well, about here.
I, I feel, I'm not sure I say, let's study it. I think the ordinance that we have has worked in the past. We had a dog removed from town because, uh, it, uh, was deemed dangerous. Uh, and we went through the hearings and, uh, we required that it be removed.
Removed to where?
Uh, quite frankly, I don't care.
Oh, now, sneaky.
I don't know. It doesn't matter. It, it, remove it from the city. If they wanna give it to Cousin Eddie, old Collins, that's fine, country.
From the country, yeah.
Or in the country. Outside.
Outside the city limits.
That's all.
Then. The council needs to be more responsive to citizens' complaints when those events happen, and that's what I would say. If, if you feel it's adequate. I don't agree with that yet, but.
Well, even if we amend it the way you have it, you still have the same situation. The mayor and the county, the mayor and the city manager, uh, and the chief of police, they do their jobs, right?
Yeah.
So, so it's, it's the same thing.
Yeah. When you get a complaint, do you then turn it over to the council so that we are aware? This is the new kid asking questions.
It should be turned over to the mayor.
Okay, so that could be brought up then, and meeting that this particular dog, we've had a major problem, so we can take action on it?
Well, until the mayor orders the dog to be removed, the council has no role. The council had, uh, holds a hearing if the owner requests it to determine whether or not the mayor's order is valid.
Deb, do we have any of those reports from Animal Control?
For which one?
All of them.
Not all of them.
Can I see the ones that we have?
Right now?
Sure.
No, that's probably all of it.
Didn't Steve make a motion?
Yeah.
What's your other motion?
And the motion was to do an amendment to add leash and under control, and to study, uh, dangerous to see whether or not our ordinance is adequate or should be amended.
A question on your redefining leash under control. I mean, we've made the comment that we don't have a full-time policeman. If I see a dog running loose and the owner, you know, five minutes later has it on the leash, how do I prove that this dog was running loose and that some consequence should have occurred from that?
We should have somebody.
That's always a problem, isn't it? How do you, how do you prove that somebody was traveling forty miles an hour in a twenty-five mile an hour zone? Well, the leash, not on a leash is a little bit easier because if you take a picture of the dog on public property or not on their own property, uh, then that's evidence that it was not on a leash. And if you can, based on that evidence, send a letter and, uh, when we, our process for enforcing the ordinance is we would send a letter saying that, uh, your dog was observed not on a leash, and, uh, don't let it happen again, and if it happens again, then we send a letter saying, well, let's say eighty dollar fine or a hundred dollar fine, or two hundred dollar fine, whatever the fine is.
Problem I see with that is how are you gonna identify which dog it is?
How are you gonna identify it?
And, and your proposal didn't include, I'm using that as hypothetical, didn't include an eighty dollar fine or whatever.
Well, we have an ordinance that has, uh, fine, uh, set, set fines, I used to call it this.
But if it's a new definition of dog on leash, then we're gonna have to add a new.
No, it's a, uh, definition of municipal infraction.
Okay.
I'm gonna second the motion so that we can do further discussion.
Okay, thank you.
I think what Steve's saying is, is I, I, this is what I'm gathering that you're saying. We're gonna study to see what we need to change in this ordinance. I would say that we take the, the new ordinance that they shoved out as a, as an example for us to use, take that, compare it to that old one we have. Just because we wrote this ordinance in nineteen fifty-six doesn't mean that it's correct today. Let's take them and compare them, see what we need to change, and let's move forward with getting, getting new ordinance done up. We already told the Pratt sanitation guy, it takes forty-five days for an ordinance. The longer we sit on it, the longer it's gonna take. So I say let's, let's move forward with doing a new ordinance, um, comparing it with the example and get done.
Any further discussion? Ken?
Yes.
Doug? Yes. Sue?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Rich.
Well, thank you for bringing this, uh, to our attention and providing the possible solution, suggested I should, so.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Uh, discussion on Animal Control contract. We're on the edge of it.
Yeah. And you table until further discussion is had with that.
Well, and, and, yeah, the tabling in for a future meeting is a good idea. We are currently out of contract. Uh, because, uh, it goes from July first to whatever, so we currently do not have Animal Control in place, I think.
And just through your reference, I just received this last week.
Yes, I figured that they were very late in sending it out. They should have sent it out uh, a month of May first.
May first.
June first, yeah.
May first, but they had returned to us by June nineteenth.
Yeah.
But she received it last year.
I figured it wasn't.
Well.
So she were, she wrote on here somewhere, I'm missing it now, but, that, oh, she, I'm willing to, I'm also willing to participate in city council meetings to discuss any aspects of Animal Control in this city. I, I think it might be even something where we need to get her down here and, uh, discuss this with her.
And my recollection is that, uh, Linda Merkel, uh, was down with us last time, uh, and pushed the contractor we signed before, right? So we should invite her and, uh, a, uh, council, uh, board representative if available, because if we don't like the contract and it needs to be changed, she's not gonna have the authority to do it. I mean, I mean, they kind of, this one subject right here, the city understands that all services is subject to the control officer's availability, which I understand, I agree with you, and discretion. I just don't wanna do it. I don't wanna come down in Maxwell. Is that, that's the way I read that. This is with expressed approval, the city official accepts an emergency. I had, I had that circled, circled also, because it says, uh, all services, well, that would be everything under number two. And so, uh, I can understand the Animal Control Officer's availability. I do too. I can understand and discretion.
See, and I look at discretion as, it, it might be one of those where they say, okay, yeah, I get it, this dog was running off of this leash, so I'm down here, but now the, the owner was chasing it. And so my discretion would be, I'm not gonna take the dog into custody because the owner is here claiming it, and so that's where I get the discretion side of it. Well, I mean, it's just the same as, same thing as if I pull you over for, for doing forty, forty to twenty-five. I can either write you a ticket, or I can write you a warning, or I can drop the ticket down a little bit, or, I mean, it's that discretion that kind of.
But can discretion be much broader?
I see what you guys are saying with the discretion of, I don't wanna, I don't wanna drive to Maxwell today, cause I'm just about ready to get off duty, so.
Or I don't, I don't wanna, uh, uh, do anything about this dog bite, because, uh, uh, the dog looks pretty calm to me.
Right. It was calm when I got there, and they, they knew your dog, but it's calm when I get there, so I'm not gonna do anything. Which is kind of what happened, was what the sheriff was saying last time.
Saying that, like, if the dog, some sneaks out of gate or something, gets loose, and the animal's out there, or the owner's out there trying to catch it, you can't do anything about that, I mean, they're.
Dogs, dogs are dogs, are gonna run when they get out, so, as long as the, the person is actively trying to catch him.
And it's not trying to beg at somebody's legs or whatever.
So do we want to invite Linda and Hannah Henderson?
Well, I, I don't know which supervisor has taken over, whether, whether they've changed supervisors. But a supervisor, I mean, it may be Latifah, maybe Linda.
Well, it wouldn't hurt that when we call to invite them, that we let them know that we also just got this, and we're out of contract.
Timing.
That, that the timing was very poor.
Yeah.
So would we really wanna set that, set for next meeting? That's a much away.
I said I think we need to move forward on that Animal Ordinance, not that I wanna have another meeting, but.
That's what I just heard you say.
Deb's Claire and I is over there when we come to another meeting.
August seventh.
I'm the one that gets in trouble for overtime.
She had lunch today at five thirty.
Well, our next meeting would be August seventh and, uh, which would be two weeks after the twenty-fourth, which is two weeks from now, if we were to have another meeting.
I'm gone next week, but two weeks would work.
Twenty-fourth is a bad day.
I'm not available.
It's April.
Yeah.
I'm working right now.
Oh.
Well, then let's just wait for, uh, the August seventh meeting. And if we can agree to contract terms at, uh, August seventh meeting, uh, we can have, give the mayor approval, uh, to sign, uh, once the, uh, contract is rewritten and signed by the board.
I'll ask Linda if she's available. Or if it takes care of it.
Can you send out that template that you have about the?
I gotta send it.
Okay.
Go under the state.
Yeah.
Send that to me.
I was just looking at it.
All right, so.
What?
Her template.
Under the services.
So.
If, if we are, uh, saying, uh, we have a dog that's, uh, uh, attacked somebody and we, uh, want, well, first of all, what are we asking the dog Animal Control Officer to do? If we have a complaint that someone, uh, was attacked. If we have a complaint that someone, uh, was attacked, and they called the sheriff, and the sheriff may call the animal control, they may come down themselves, uh, and file a report. The last report that we got said, uh, oh, the animal seemed pretty calm when I got there, which doesn't address the issue of did, did the, did the dog attack, right? For, we had an individual, we had, uh, uh, may have not have had any evidence, we have, uh, what does, what does a law enforcement person need if they're coming down and doing an investigation? I know when we did the hearing on the other dog that was removed from town. Uh, it was just, uh, a number of complaints that they were running loose, right?
And pictures.
Right.
And, and we had pictures that they were running loose, and, uh, uh, we had, and we also had complaints that, uh, it marked that and chased people, right?
Well, had somebody pinned in the back end of the pickup.
Had pinned in the back end of the pickup.
Okay. So we went ahead with the hearing, and, uh, or the mayor went ahead and ordered the dog removed, had the hearing, and it was removed. I don't see anything in the services under number two that says that they're gonna come out and, uh, doing an inspection and report.
So is that someplace else?
They, they put a cart launch down there, any other animal control related pro, problem may be dealt with at the animal control officer's discretion, that's, that's all. So, so I mean, based on what our entire discussion was tonight about this.
Really, what we need them to do is to make a determination as to whether or not the animal is dangerous based on investigation, dangerous or vicious. We need them to make that determination. I'm not that person. I'm not the person that should be determining whether or not animals vicious or dangerous, that should be somebody else. And then when I'm told that he is vicious or dangerous, I will provide the order, you guys will advocate.
Right. Interquested.
Yeah, interquested.
And I think that needs to be added into this book of services for them.
And it needs to be dangerous per definition of our ordinance.
Our definition, propensity is enough.
Yeah, I didn't see anything in here where it says that they're going to come out and do an investigation. Or that even, I'm sure that if they don't wanna do it, the sheriff's office deputy, sheriff's deputy certainly would.
So under consideration, they do charge twenty-five dollars per trip for investigations, regardless of whether or not the animals get detained, finding an animal under other services.
And that's under three D?
Three D, yeah.
And a trip charge is outside of normal working hours.
Outside of.
Twenty-five dollars per trip for investigations, so investigations is not a service. It's a, it's something that they do, 'cause it's not listed in their scope of services.
Right.
Is that how I'm supposed to interpret that?
What they're charging for.
Well, they can charge me.
The only investigation they have listed there is to eat.
Right.
That's rabid sick or injured animals, so unless that's what they're talking about, but.
Could those one be investigated?
No.
It's just cover book, determine, take it away.
So it sounds like we need to add a L, where they investigate dangerous animal allegations. Something like that.
Yeah, and then make a determination, and then remove the officer's discretion.
Yeah. I mean, Joel makes a good point about leaving discretion in there.
Well, they have the discretion to make the determination, but they don't have the discretion to determine whether or not they get to deal with something.
Um, I don't wanna respond to that one.
That's, that's a different type of discretion.
If that's the case, let's put discretion on the fire department too.
Exactly.
They sort of go out the moment I can find a fire.
So they have a problem with them making a discretionary decision based off of what the information they have. They don't get to have the discretion as to whether or not they come.
They don't get to have the discretion of whether or not they show up to the fire.
Yes.
It's an animal call, it should be.
Animal call, they show up.
We call it for animal call.
Well, which, a lot of times comes from residents, because residents have to call as their property proposes, so. That's why somebody comes over here.
Well, a lot of times they don't report the bite until they get to the hospital, and then, but then the sheriff would have to take that report.
All right, so that was tabled until August seventh?
Yep.
Was that a booking?
Are we invited?
Was there a booking?
I think it, I think somebody did.
I started one, but I don't know where we ended up with it.
So I'll second that.
So are we invited? Yeah, I reached out.
Yeah, and, and in the invitation of animal control and one of the supervisors.
Further discussion. Sue?
I'm sorry, I was writing.
Table till August seventh.
August, yeah, I'm fine. I'm retired.
Come on, Sue, keep up. So say yes, we go on.
Say yes, all right.
Yes, yes, yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
Yes.
I've got two ears, but one brain, and it only works half the time.
All right, one, two.
Softball score at eight, three, nothing, call it to Maxwell.
Discussion action on cameras for business district.
All right, so I, uh, I passed out some handouts here, um, I met with Astro Security to kind of get started on some cameras here in town. Right now, I just went with, for the business district, um, so the map, basically, they would put two cameras on the corner of City Hall here, one facing north, one facing south. And then two cameras down on the pole, right by the, in between the vet clinic and the flower store there, um, one facing north and one facing south. So that kind of, the blueprint picture kind of shows you where the cameras would reach. Not saying it wouldn't be able to see what's going on there, uh, where, where there's a gap, but it just wouldn't be a real clear picture. And then he gave us two different quotes, the one quote is, um, the one that's seven thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and some change. That would be wired cameras, and then they have to, they have to be in view of each other in order to hit back here to the DVR. The DVR would be placed here in the city hall, and then, but they have to be in sync with each other. The second quote that we have is more of a wireless, um, cloud, you know? And that was eighty-five, or eight thousand four hundred and ninety-four, some change. And that's a cloud-based, uh, we can basically put those wherever we can get power, and then it would send it to the cloud, and you'd have thirty days to get any video coverage.
Would those cameras require, uh, wifi or whatever?
Yeah, it has like a SIM card in it.
It has its own SIM.
Yeah.
Oh, it has a SIM card.
Yeah, it has a SIM card that like connects to the clouds and, and sends it, sends it right to the cloud and.
So there's a monthly service fee on that.
There's, there'd be a monthly service fee on both of them, it's twenty dollars a month, um, for the wired one. And that, that just kind of like is the service, twenty-four seven service, if cameras go down, we can call them, they'll come out and take care of them. The other one is a hundred dollars a month, and that's, that includes that service contract as well as the cloud access.
And we have a lot of problems in town that we actually need cameras.
Well, one of the, one of the events that I think about is, is when the American Legion, or VFW, one of them, had their window broken out. You know, that would, we would have been able to catch that, um, if something happens at the MAC.
I only got cameras.
We can catch the front door area.
I have people coming up to my door in the middle of the night trying to get in access with the card access. My camera inside just gets a little bit of the messing with it, but nothing much. You guys wanna put camera on the rooftop or something, and we can figure out how to get to you power or whatever wifi you'd more want them to.
And that's, you know, other things that I thought of, so like, the, the one with the, uh, that's wireless basically, that one also will do AI. So if all of a sudden somebody robs the bank and they come out wearing a red shirt and blue jeans, we can type that in to the camera system, look for a red shirt and blue jeans. And it'll, it'll go through and get everything that went through in a, in that period.
We're talking one inch here.
Yeah.
Well.
A good discretion.
Shouldn't each business be responsible for patrolling their own business?
Well, we, we talk about the, the lack of law enforcement in the city, and that's where I'm trying to, trying to make a more secure city. Um, we can't afford a police officer in town, so where, where are we gonna get some law enforcement for a hundred dollars a, a month? Well, let's put some cameras out here, and now we can kind of at least help with investigations if something does happen. And we can catch the people and teach them not to come to Maxwell and mess around.
Anything down the park with the ones could be checked, bathrooms get vandalized all the time.
I got some guys stealing cigarette butts out behind the MAC all the time. Used cigarette, I'm not joking, used cigarette butts.
So that's, I, I just know, I, this all came around because I'm looking at the, the infrastructure security that we have around here. And that's where I, I started with this whole project.
But if we had major, major problems that, I mean.
Not yet.
Not yet, but we're not growing, we're not getting more people, we've got three million.
Because nobody wants to come to our town that, that, if we've got problems, so let's, let's.
That's your police officers helping.
So let's, so let's have, let's have some kind of security for the, the people that live in the city, so that they know that this is a safe community to live in.
Will these cameras, uh, allow determination of speed on the road?
No.
So they're not subject to, uh, any of the, uh, playing around the legislation?
No, we don't, we don't have any, there's no LPR license plate reader, uh, software on here. Closest it gets is, you know, we can say we wanna look for a white pickup truck, and they'll find all white pickup trucks that went through the area at that time.
Does it read the license plate, like you could see it, it wouldn't read like?
It actually, the.
Amber Alert comes up and they got this.
It, it wouldn't, it wouldn't notify us of that, but if, there again, if we knew that it was a white pickup truck.
Yeah.
We, we say.
Read it.
Keep an eye out for all white pickup trucks, and then we can zoom in and say, you know. If it's, if it's inside of these little bubbles that we have on, on this map here, um, we should be able to zoom in close enough, we can get a plate off of it.
Yeah, it's like my MAC camera, I had the guy right after the Casey's caught on fire, and you could see him getting them out of the car, but of course it was way too far off to see anything after that. All you could see was the people walking up and in the fire.
This is very similar in cost to the company that I proposed last year, uh, which was a company out of Borcati, out of California. We did look at a license plate reader through that for controlled access to the dump site. That was a much more different project, because that was like twenty thousand dollars, because that was gonna require power and defense and other issues down there. But one of the pieces of that was about seven thousand dollars to incorporate one of these types of cameras to watch the building down here. And we basically watched the park, the bathroom area, because we had that, a lot of issues with that bathroom.
I've, I've seen in some communities, uh, cameras that are attached to light poles, uh, because it's a power source.
That's what he was talking about, this one in front of the MAC.
The one from the MAC is on a power pole.
Yes, that would be a powerful down there.
With light poles.
And the, but the one on City Hall is not on a.
No, it'd be right out here on the corner of the building, so you just get the power out of this building.
It's a system being built, built to.
Yes.
Add more cameras on it.
So the wired one, um, it comes with an eight channel MVR, um, so we can put up to eight cameras, but like I said, they all have to be within.
The range of the TV.
Within view of the, the next one.
One that are wired.
Yeah.
But the other one.
The other one, um, you can add on and, 'cause that's, that's where I was going was, I'd like to put one down at the water plant, one out at the sewer lagoon, you know? Just make sure nobody messes with that kind of stuff, kind of the security on the infrastructure, um, so we wouldn't need to keep cameras all in view of each other. So I was kind of going for the, the higher one, I mean, um, the, the monthly cost kind of turns me off a little bit, but, um, maybe that's still twelve hundred dollars a year that we'd be putting towards, you know, security.
Could you get one down to the Legion Field, so if they break in there again, or all the drug activity that goes down at the park? All the cars that are parked there later than?
Yep, and then, and then if there's something going on, we could take that camera footage, give it to the, to the, to the deputies, and then they have, they at least have some leads to go on.
I'll catch, catch people down there.
Or if we got a dog that's running loose, might go.
You can catch it on camera.
Say, hey, there's that dog, it went that way, you know?
Of course, you don't know who it belongs to.
Well, might go see where, which way it runs to the house.
License tag.
I don't think it'll zoom in that far.
Read the chip.
So.
Read the chip.
Like, so this, this was just the, the beginning of the building blocks that I'm looking at for security in, in town, um.
It's funny you say that, because I, I'm trying to read this, I couldn't see this earlier, but the mayor put out wish lists for the city. One of my wish lists are still rent-a-cop for, between the two cities, Collins, you know, safety officer, rent-a-cop. There's police officers like yourself that are working the regular job, and then they still wanna pull an eight-hour shift somewhere or whatever, and you know? But like I said, for a hundred dollars a month, you know?
It's a lot more visibility, not to mention the visibility that you get by seeing the cameras, even walking up and down the street.
Word gets around, so that could deter a ton of stuff.
I mean, that's, um, you know, you say people laugh about it, um, so last weekend, had some kids that blew up some mailboxes in our city where I work.
Everybody's got a doorbell camera.
And, uh, um, they just happened to drive by the school, so I pulled up video camera from that. They also went by an LPR, so I knew what time it happened, I knew what kind of car I was looking for, we put into the LPR, we got, here's the license plate number, I contacted the owner. They said it was their son, I, I met their son at ten and fifteen at night, and, uh, he got charged with damaging those mailboxes. So within seventy-two hours, I had my suspects and cited them, released them, and they'll, they'll have their day in court now. So, I mean, that's, that's the kind of help that these cameras help, will do for the law enforcement around here, you know? And, and not saying that we have a bunch of large crimes going on around here. And, and not saying that we have a bunch of large crimes going on around here, but, um, the ones that we do have, why not try and stop them before?
Well, the other side of that is we don't know what crimes we do have.
Right.
And you went on opposite sides of the street. Because. You, well, I can see the southern one provides, uh. Good coverage, uh, for the east side of the street. But it doesn't provide coverage for the front of the MAC or, cause the, it doesn't.
Yeah, that.
Doesn't go over it that way.
That's kinda just a bubble that he put in there, I mean, we, we could actually turn that camera just a little bit more so it. Catch, he just made it like straight down the street.
So it's only gonna do a hundred and eighty degrees?
Yes.
Each camera doing ninety degrees?
Yes.
Uh. So you could turn both of those and then have the mist coverage in the middle.
A gap in the middle, which you kept up eventually when they moved.
Or as soon as you say, they put it up against the building or put it mounted to the front of the night.
You, and you guys need, as long as you're paying for the install or whatever, well, I mean, I'm, I'll ask the board members, but whatever for the town, I mean. I always tell Tony, I try and have my one in the back, Tony, for the city barn, but I can't always see over there because our cameras are not that good.
Is there a powered pole right there? Makes a lot, lots of sense.
Looks like so. Well, there's a.
There's a, there's a light pole.
Light pole right in front.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if we could.
Cause the other, the other concern we had about down there on that pole even was. When we put flags out or Christmas decorations out.
Don't wanna take up.
Will, will, will block the camera view. Um, and so that was one of the things that when they'd actually come out and do the install, um, that we would be calling Tony to.
Absolutely.
To say, hey, where, where do these things mount and making sure that we can put the cameras or it doesn't get blocked.
Typically, the cameras will be high off, how high off the ramp?
I don't remember what he said on that.
Cause the flags are about twelve to fourteen feet.
Flags are about. Fourteen feet, probably fourteen feet because I remember.
Yeah.
Under fourteen.
Under fourteen, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I don't remember what, how high he said they had to be mounted.
I can see where you would want them high enough that they wouldn't be vandalized.
Yeah. Well, even, even then, if they're, if somebody's getting up there to damage the cameras. It's going to the cloud and then we've got video of them coming up and messing with the cameras.
There's also potential, other potential starting points.
Yeah, yeah.
We could, we could mount one back here to the backside of the fire station which captures the back.
Yep, and we had actually talked about putting one, uh, when, when Alex was here, um, I talked to him about even putting one in here. Um, you know, we've got, Deb sits in here by herself most time and as people come in, they're irate. When they get their water bill, server bill, whatever. Um, so just kinda a security for her as well, not that anybody would sit here and watch Deb when she's at work, but.
No more gaming on the job, Deb.
I can't do my nails anymore.
But, but if, but if something does happen, we can go back and look at, look at that camera and figure out who we're looking for, so.
Are there really that many problems within Maxwell? That you know of?
Not that I know of. I, I would be inter, I would be interested in putting the cameras up. To find out, I mean, it's a plus seven, eight thousand dollar investment, uh, that was an amateur item over three years. Um, so a thousand dollars, uh, less than a thousand dollars a camera, cause there's four cameras. Uh. Well, even five hundred dollars a camera per year. So it's, and that would tell us whether or not there is a problem. I know that when Logstons existed. Uh, their pop machine, uh, was vandalized a few times. And somebody, uh, broke in and other people tried to break in to get cigarettes. Uh, we don't have that problem anymore because they're not here, but, uh. You know?
But I think they just put a pop machine out in front of moms now. Maybe put one out there now.
Yes. They probably moved the ones from, from mom.
They're both there.
Oh, yeah. Uh, so, yeah. We don't know, but I would be. It's not a large expenditure.
And like I said, this is just a starting point, I, I mean, I, I'd like to see some down around the parks, down, you know, where we know we have people that vandalize. The buildings down there.
Yeah.
You know? Um, the, the, like I said, the water, the water plant, you know? Um.
Twenty-one calls for service in Maxwell. But sure. I do. I gotta tell you.
Alright.
But you can look at it.
Okay.
So. Uh. The, this is on the agenda. Uh, as, so we could certainly act on it, I'm not. Sure, we are ready to say, yeah, let's go one way or the other.
I want to, do wanna remind monetarily this fiscal year, we need to be cautious with additional spending. Until we know closer to where we are at, so. We have a lot of expenses.
There are grants for safety stuff, there are grants for cities, or. Especially for rural cities that don't have coverage.
I can't answer that, that, that is something I can look into though.
Somebody's researching, love it.
Alright.
Somebody decides.
The seven thousand dollar one is for wired. And the wired means that we are running a cable to it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
And then the, the NVR would sit right here in City Hall somewhere, whether you put it in that closet or over here by Deb or.
So they would have warned with that system, so with that system, the cameras have to look at each other in order to feed. So if this camera is out here, if the next camera is too far down. The only way we're gonna get coverage down to where that last mapping point shows is if it's actually close enough to pick up the next camera view. So they all have to look at each other in order to continue, have continuity service. So in other words, if we wanna get one out here at the wastewater treatment plant. Because we have vice events that are stopping out there, that means we'd have to have fifty cameras looking at each other all the way there.
And you can only use so many at a time before it's.
Before it says, no more.
Yeah, before the system starts logging down.
So my suggestion, which is very similar to the last time, is that if you do cameras, wireless cameras are, are the ticket. But I understand there's an increased cost or monthly cost because you're paying for the cell phone provider service. But it also provides us with the ability to have them relocated. They don't necessarily have to be attached to a wire.
So even the, uh, eight thousand dollar one. Uh, still, they have to be inside of each other?
Those do, no, those do not. Those do not. But we just had, we, when we did the mapping, we just, to try and catch the business district, that's just where we placed them.
Okay. And it would be eight thousand dollars, uh, to get it up and running and a hundred dollars. Uh, for the, uh, cell connection. And that's per camera or is that for all four cameras?
We can, for all four cameras. Yep, it's, uh, sixty-six dollars a month for the standard license, remote access, deep search, VCA, tech support, edge recording. Archive video for four cameras and then thirty-four dollars a month for thirty-day cloud storage for four cameras. All of a hundred dollars per month.
Yeah, then if we add cameras. It'd just be like.
Probably.
Another twenty dollars a camera?
Yeah, uh, the.
Twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five?
Yeah.
I said, let's, uh. Use this as a, uh, baseline and take a look at the budget. Uh, keep it active. Uh, see.
Would you run the table list until next month until somebody looks to see if there's any grants available? And then make action on it?
I know there is for schools.
I think we need to look at the cost of this overall versus any problems that have been. Happening within the town. Is that, or is this something that each individual business should look into on their own and the city just be responsible? For city-owned property?
Move up the table. Second.
Further discussion.
I would like to know also if you could, Joel, you could give. Uh, a rough estimate of what a monthly cost of rent card would be to.
Okay.
Okay?
Would need a policy and a procedure in place. We'll have to look at that.
Sure.
And why, like, the insurance coverage.
You're, you're gonna do the research.
So, so we're already just talking thousands of dollars, so.
We've got several zeros on that real fast.
There was my looking into.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm done.
Sorry.
No.
Further discussion?
Well, I just, like I said, I think we need to look at what has happened. Is it gonna cost a whole heck of a lot less than what this is gonna cost the city? And look into each individual business having their own security. Rather than.
We're not, we're not, we're not doing this for the, any business or persons or personal property. We're doing this for the city cover.
That's, I, I think even, that's a, a selling point for develop, for business development in town is to say.
I had my own security system.
You can put your.
I taught people in my garbage cans.
You can put your business up here because it's a safe and secure area and.
Yeah, it depends on how much you wanna.
Alright.
Okay.
This is a motion to.
Yeah.
Doug.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
Steve.
Yeah. Thank you, Joel.
Uh, discussion, action on old settler fireworks.
Do we have anything in settler?
Or settlers?
Settler. Old settler. I don't have anything in my packet.
There isn't any.
Let me, since we had the discussion last month about the truck pull and timing and everything. I took it upon myself to call the company directly to see what they needed for setup time and how much room they needed. And, um. They immediately sent me a contract, which I told them, wake up people, that's not what I'm asking for the event. Um, but they did eventually send me confirmation, they would be here no earlier than noon. And they had two hundred and twenty feet when they were ready to shoot things off. So I think our arrangement last month was still doable. If we put a fence, give them room, access to get back, so if the person can set up, it'll bring a flat bed and, and all the peripherals that go with it. And then come six o'clock, everybody, or was it six o'clock the time, I think we said?
Five.
Five, well, whatever the time was, then everybody needed to be out of there, so he had his two hundred and twenty foot radius to shoot things off. So that, that is what I learned by going directly to the, the source and finding out that, so that they weren't. Hemming and hawing, no, they don't need to be here at six o'clock, they said, oh, absolutely not. Rather, they need to be here no earlier than noon, but between twelve and twelve-thirty is when they thought they would be here.
Big difference, three hundred yards. Two hundred and twenty feet would go about anywhere.
Isn't that what I said, or was it yards, Deb?
Not those feet.
It's feet.
You said, you said feet, but I'm, what I'm saying is they were talking three hundred yards last time.
Okay, no.
That provided that no other, no other opportunity, I mean, they could shoot those off the football field.
They sent me a little picture, I didn't bring it, I don't believe. But that's what I learned. And I did share all that with, uh. Old settlers.
Have anything on fireworks?
Yeah, we don't have any permits approved.
Did we?
Well, that's because Doug, you screwed it all up.
I screwed it all up?
When they sent the contract to her, it had your names on it.
They were gonna fix it and send her the right one, it still had my name, well, they could cross that off.
Did we find out what, the DNR, were they gonna have any issues with allowing people down there for parking?
We're not having any issues as long as. We weren't burning at that particular time and he suggested to have any loose already burnt and out of the way, so no one would set it on fire.
And then the questions I had about the, the towing. Um. So if we have a tow company come out here for just in case, so that they're on standby if we need to move something. Um, there may be a fee on that, just for them to be here, especially if they don't get any toes. Um, but even, uh, like I, I gotta hold a deal about it, so. Both tow company, there's a tow company that's twenty-five minutes away and one's twenty-six minutes away, that's the closest ones. Um, one's in Ames, one's in State Center and. If they send one truck over here and say there's three cars. By the time they hook that car, travel to Ames, drop it off at their tow lot, come back to get the next one, there's an hour. So it's gonna take three hours to get them, get those three cars out of here, if they only send one truck. Um. So their suggestion was if we could find someplace to drop the cars here in town.
Compound them in our home facility?
Well, but then we look at liability for, we've.
If somebody hurts a car.
We're, we're storing a car in our, you know, on, on our property that we had towed. So. So it's kind of a, I don't know how we wanna do it.
Can be towed and put on the screen.
So we do not have to prevent requests for fireworks currently?
Yeah, she didn't get it in time. To what the changes that she needed.
So we don't have anything to make action on.
Okay, well, which means.
No fireworks.
There'll be no fireworks.
I thought we saw paperwork on, from that. On fireworks and, uh, what?
Alright. There's no discussion, action. So on to discussion, action on old settlers, our call permit.
This one's the same way, it didn't. She's fighting with the Graham people to get it released to us. What she said.
And that's something uncontrollable.
Okay.
What about moms? Cause she had wrong addresses and everything, did that ever get taken care of?
It's still on hold with the state.
So there's absolutely no alcohol licenses at all for old settlers?
I'm waiting for them to release it from the state so I can see if he changed anything.
On to discussion, action on Hailers Cooley Bond Council Engagement Agreement. With approval of, and of the contract and authorization that Eric to sign.
I will second.
Right, so.
Further discussion?
I'm sorry, I missed you, Steve, did you, okay.
Pardon?
He made the motion.
You made the motion?
To approve the contract and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Okay. So they seconded?
The sound good?
Further discussion? Hearing done, Joel?
Yes.
Sue? Doug?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
You're pretty optimistic, you signed before we all said yes.
On to, I have a signed copy here for you. Discussion, action on resolution fixing date for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar general obligation capital loan notes in the city Maxwell, state of Iowa, providing for publication notice thereof.
Move approval of the resolution. And, uh, Deb will need to, uh, give it the next resolution number.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Can we add cameras to this? The, uh. Everybody else. Then you would, you would go in. Uh, on the, and fill in the blanks where it says met in open regular session. Uh, six P M. Uh, with president was Mayor Higgins, list everybody.
Yep.
And put a resolution number on a resolution, uh, as a resolution number, you just have to fill in. Uh, and that also requires a six P M. And everyone should note. Uh, that the publication shows. Uh, approximately how much, or that, well, we will. For a hundred thousand dollar house, it will cost no more than fifty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. On their taxes. So people can calculate their own, I guess.
So how many years is this, Steve, do you remember?
Uh, uh, no. The fifty-one sixty-five was a eleven-year. Forty-four something was a fifteen-year. We had the higher, Tiana recommended that we go to the hearing with a higher amount. We may not borrow two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, we may do it over fifteen years. We cannot exceed the fifty-one sixty-five. And based upon what people say, we might be able to, uh, lower it. By doing fifteen-year and, or we might be able to, uh, do other things.
Further discussion?
On the, uh. Let's see. On the notice of public hearing to be pub, oh, that, that you just fill in the paper.
Mm-hmm.
Name on that. So all, all the blanks are things that you would normally fill in, right?
Yeah.
The. Thing that keeps me up at night before we go to, is there a second before we discuss this?
Joel?
Oh, okay.
Yeah?
The thing that keeps me up at night. Is we have the finances down pat. We have, uh, we can borrow two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, uh, we have enough money to do the entire project. Uh. However. Uh, you know, the project costs one-point-three million. And, uh, we're getting grants for five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. Uh, and what I don't know is. We're going to get that money.
Right.
Because if we don't get the, the money in a kindly manner. Uh, we don't have one-point-three million. Available in cash reserves.
Um, as soon as I.
This project's going to move fast.
As soon as I get any bills, I send them over to Simmering and Tor, Cory, they fill out the paperwork, send it back to me. So usually within. Two to three weeks.
Okay, so these, these. We've got one grant that is, has to be used for the water line. And we got one grant that has to be used for the road. And so they're, the very first bill that we get. Where they're going and tearing up the road. And we turn it into Simmering Coria's. Soon as we get it, I suppose they're going to give us bills every thirty days. And so they give us a bill and it's for a road. Then we turn it over and, 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 oh, within another thirty days, we will get back. Uh, the two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar money. When they start actually putting in the water line. Uh, and we get billed for it, we get three-hundred thousand dollars cash, that we'll start getting that money back. In the meantime, there's a lot of other work going on, things are moving fast. It's just going to be nipping down. We got all the money we need, it's just, do we have it at the right time?
Cash flow.
There's also a, you know, like, you know, from the time we get the bill, so we get the bill at the end of the month, and then we have thirty, sixty, ninety days, depending on their standard.
If it's, if it's ninety?
If it's ninety, we'll, we'll be fine. But we use those, those opportunities in there to determine, you know, if we need to sit on this one this month. Until next month or until the following month, until we can get some money back in.
Yeah. And the bank, the bank money. Uh, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars or less, whatever, won't be available until mid-September? Isn't that what I saw on one of the other things? Well, if that's not available until mid-September. Uh, the project's going to almost be done by mid-September, isn't it?
It could be real close.
It could be real close. I keep thinking about that.
Going seventy-five days from July eighth. August eighth, September eighth.
Middle of September. But then you're, then you're talking a billing, billing cycle not heading until October. Which then.
We should be all right, you're right.
Bill due by January, you know, so.
We're, we're, we're going to have to keep, keep on, Deb's going to have to keep on top of it, we don't have to do it, Deb's going to have to keep it up.
Thanks, give it to me, thanks, I value it.
I'm sure it should be a free job, I would doubt.
Yeah. It's. I just want everybody to understand that this is not going to be a walk in the park, but. We have the money to do it. Once we get the bank loan. So we just need to make sure that we have that cash in order to, at the right time, to pay our bills.
All right, um, hearing, no further discussion? Sue?
It's to, uh, approve setting the date.
Yeah.
Of the publication, or date of publication.
Yes.
Yes. Joel?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Doug? Ask Steve.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Discussion, action on resolution declaring an official intent under Treasury Regulation one-point-one-five-zero-dash-two to issue debt to reimburse the city for certain original expenditures paid in connection with the specified projects listed or known as Baldwin Street construction. Slash water, slash.
Slash.
Storm.
I move, uh. Approval of, uh, the resolution.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
On page four of the resolution. It has section four. Where it lists, has blank lines, the project funds from which original expenditures are to be advanced. Uh, total estimated cost, amount of borrowing, and so forth. Uh. I think we were told that they needed to have this. Um, filled out by this Friday, those lines.
Shows the table.
Huh?
Shows today. Passed and approved, ten.
It's passed and approved, but.
But they need to fill in their lines?
Well, these lines need to be filled out and. I thought I read it in one of, uh. Uh, emails that, that need, that section four needed to be, uh. Done by this Friday. And I know Wes is on vacation. This whole week, because I tried to get a hold of him. But he has somebody that has worked with him on this.
Spencer.
Spencer.
Would probably be a good sign, but.
Yeah, and so it's going to take some help from Spencer and we listed. Uh, where funds are coming from. I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven places where funds are coming from, including eight for a bank loan. Uh, nine for ten, including grants. So I don't know exactly how this needs to be filled out. So Spencer and Ayers and Tiana will have to work on this, and if it has to be done by Friday. Uh, you'll, you'll have to rankle everybody. Did you find out where it's said?
I'm taking vacation tomorrow, Friday.
It's on his, it's on Ayers. Uh, letter that's in our packet. The paragraph that says section four of the resolution requires you to fill in an estimate of cost, amount of borrowing, and completion date of we, of each project. As well as the name of the fund from which original expenditures will be advanced. We suggest that you use one fund for the purpose of coordinating all the, well, and we have that, we have a fund. Which is the Baldwin Street project.
So that makes me.
We will funnel, funnel money into that and pay out of it. So we have one fund. And maybe it's just, we say Baldwin Street project. May, but we may have to separate it between the road and.
Water.
The water and, and the drainage along Fifth Street. To the, uh, river, so there may be. Three lines that we have to use, and all of it would be obviously one fund. He's going to need help with that. Call Tiana.
Okay, I quit.
Good night.
I don't blame you. Two weeks.
She could be serious, I was here this afternoon when things were just going A, A-wire to the limit.
Which, which, which reminds me, maybe we should always be meeting on the second Wednesday instead of the first. Could you have been able to get the books closed by the first Wednesday of the month?
Yes, I actually have, I was unable to do it that Friday.
You were? Well, it was Friday, that's not Wednesday.
But.
The Friday call. Anyway. Those.
Would it help you?
What, the, no, because my payroll and stuff changes depending on the time of the month.
Every two weeks is not always the second.
Yeah, because the payroll's not always the first Wednesday or the second Wednesday. Depending if you have a three-month week period.
Well, meaning right now, the first Wednesday payroll is not always the first Wednesday that happens.
Payroll's just today.
Yeah.
That's why.
It remains until second Wednesday.
This is why I don't take vacation. Because I can't get everything done.
Okay, moving right along, I moved approval and we had a second.
Further discussion?
And Deb knows that page four, section four, needs to be filled out and possibly by this Friday. And she'll check with Ayers and with Tiana as necessary in order to get that done.
Yeah, because I have another sheet that I'm going to need help for, the finance certificate.
Yeah.
There's a lot of questions on there, I have no clue.
Joel?
Yes.
Doug?
Yep.
Sue?
Yes.
Steve?
Yeah. Yes.
Discussion, action on twenty-four, twenty-five LP gas contract.
Move that we prepay. And what do we normally do, just give them a check?
Yes.
Second.
Further discussion? I only have one question, how close to our budget was that? I think we were closer to three, thirty-two, thirty-three hundred in anticipation, if you remember.
Well, they have seventeen hundred gallon, Deb and I, we didn't look at that, though, we thought it was around two thousand last year.
Well.
Might be a fewer gallon.
I think our total due is under what we budgeted. So I think we'll be good there. All right, further discussion? Sue?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
On to discussion, action on removal of trees. Um, I think we just need to get the posting notice up again.
Get what?
The notice, uh, bid acceptance posted.
I think.
Yep. Uh, can we use the same as we used last time? Any issues with that, and then the number of trees, which was like, I'm more concerned. How many trees?
How many are left?
Yes.
Yeah.
I can review that before we post.
Okay.
So then how many trees to?
When you posted?
Soon as possible.
Okay. Do we get that too?
If, if.
As soon as?
If the council thinks, posting that, or do we need to wait until fall?
Do it as soon as possible.
Get it done.
We've got those widow makers hanging around.
This will clean up the trees, preferably in the parks, the.
Parks, cemeteries.
Cemeteries, other city properties that are.
There were a few that I think were missed because they went around too.
So.
Yeah, and we may need to take, yes. We may need to, uh, have, uh, an arborist come in and, uh, do another run through the town, make sure nothing's caught. I know there are some diseased trees that are oak, uh, and not ash, so.
Okay. Um.
Also. Ken, you asked about the.
Four trees?
Four trees. I reached back out to him, gave him the, Tony gave me a map and pictures and he said.
I think I gave you that.
You, you gave it to me after Tony gave it to me.
Okay.
Um. That, he said he, he would put us on the schedule for November. And that he doesn't do stumps.
No, that wasn't the deal.
So. What would you think was, and one of the trees that he was going to, I just got the homeowner in yesterday complaining that it's losing a lot of limbs.
The one down here?
Yeah.
Is it on city property?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it was missed.
Okay. Well, we'll just include that with the next one. But as far as I was understanding, if he wasn't willing to accept the four trees and stuff for rentals, we weren't willing to accept that as a preparation, so.
I agree.
Turn it back over to the sheriff's office.
Unless we bump it up to six trees and we do the stumps. If only four trees and not new stumps. Might be an option. Yeah, we can get, uh, the grinder and hook it up to. Yeah, we can get the grinder and hook it up to the skin loader that we bought.
We haven't bought it yet. Something wishless.
Stight your town.
But we could include that in our contract that we have six initial stumps to be removed. If we really wanted to go back on, let me tell him he's doing six.
Yeah, give them an option.
Sure.
Or section, either they do six or...
Either one.
And add the one...
Of our choice.
Add the one that we got missed to that six.
That is...
That's one of them.
That's one of the four. The other three are down at the park.
Cool, so we need to add two more.
And then I'll just add two more down at the park.
Everybody had approval of that?
So we want to add six now?
So it's going to be six trees, no stumps, or we'll call it, we'll just send it to the sheriff.
And are we going to...
There's no more negotiation.
Wait till November for him to come in and do them?
I don't really care when he gets them done, as long as it's...
But if...
Oh, let's put it that way.
Yeah, November thirtieth, required to be done.
But the tree beside the guy's house that's losing limbs now?
I don't know if our contract will be, contract will be in time.
Well, I'll tell you what, the, the one that's losing limbs is not one of the six. It'll be...
On the contract.
One of the new contract. And we'll get to it, hopefully.
Soon.
Sooner than then.
Okay.
Okay.
So switch back.
We're going to find three more.
Yep.
Okay.
Please let us, let me know what he decides as soon as possible.
Okay.
So I, I guess what I'm asking for is approval from the city council to post those as soon as we had the three numbers to get the first.
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Sue seconded.
Further discussion?
Proof of life.
Joel?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yep.
Sue?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, discussion action on nuisances. I must have put that on last one. I did, but I think we're still working on it, so we'll just, if everybody's okay, we can scratch that because that was on, it's supposed to be the August meeting.
That move we defer to the August meeting?
Second.
Further discussion?
Uh, how are people doing with their inspections?
So I have section A completed. I brought it up here because I saw it was on the agenda today.
So Jody says who's been running around?
Those two cars.
Weed, weed grass.
I have my second to do.
I seen somebody drive by my place and... Says I was great, and my leaves and mowing my yard. Sue did have a complaint, though.
Sue?
What? Oh, yes.
What?
Who through this town tried to find a house number if you were a fireman or policeman or something like that?
It's easier to find them on the map.
So Doug, do you have Google, do you have Google Maps?
No.
No?
No, but they need to be prominent on the residence, not on the mailbox.
Siri helps me a lot. We have coordinates. You have to have the house number on the principal building. It has to be at least, I think, two and a half inches high for each number. That, and they have to be visible from the street.
Is that a municipal violation?
Yes.
I have my list of things to do.
I'd use my Google Maps so that I could...
Well, yeah, but you, you can do that, but if you don't, you don't have the...
Oh, it's hit the park.
In an emergency, you need it.
Yeah.
For down the mailbox.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to think, because out there at Webbport, my house sits back a lot further than people in the city.
So I hope you have bigger numbers like me.
Well, if it's only supposed to be, they only...
It has to be at least two and a half inches.
At least two.
And it has to be visible from the street.
Except if you're not at midnight, you're not actually...
Well, you know, which, which means you post them out by the street. Well, it has to be on the, on the house.
Because they are on my mailbox, but this is...
Well, yeah, but there's only one mailbox in front of your house. Okay, but if you run into four or five of them in a row and they're not in the order that they should be for where the house is.
You're talking about my mailboxes.
And it's, yeah, only when off, yeah, it's...
Maybe we should put that as a next reason.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
They did pay attention to the vehicles. Although if you've seen the cars parked in the right direction, then...
Yeah, they're heading their...
A lot of things go...
But the ones over on Bald, the north of the street, they were on Vincent every once again.
But you phrased it in a way that is not...
Jeep is now facing the north instead of the south now.
Oh, yeah, they moved it.
Yeah, they moved it.
You phrased it in a way that's...
Too much as they moved it.
Plates are expired, but...
I've noticed that there's a white car parked on Crowder, right by the restrooms, on the west side of the street, greeting north. And so it's pinpointed wrong direction. And I've gone past it three times in the last week and it's still there. But that doesn't mean it doesn't move.
Where's it at?
It's right by the, right north of the restrooms.
North.
On the Crowder. South of Freedom Rock.
Yeah. Well, just, yeah, just south of the restroom, or north of the restrooms.
Have you noticed it?
I think I have.
Kind of dented up on one side. And it may get moved every day, it's just that I get down there and I see it.
When you get down there, you see it. Maybe when I get down there, I don't see it, so then...
So what we're talking about, the vehicles parked and everything, I spoke with Lieutenant Ellis from the sheriff's office. And I talked to Deb, the automated registration and titling system. Cities are eligible to apply to, to have access to that, so you can run a plate, find out who it belongs to. Deb's has expired, but she's in the process of getting it redone, but she's the only one in the city that has access to that.
Right.
So my question is, is that we're just going to leave it as her being the only one that can run the plates to find out who the car belongs to? Is, here's my, my thing is, so like snow removal, Tony's out in the middle of the night doing snow removal and a car needs to be moved.
Yeah, let's see how they do snow around here.
They just push the car out of the way?
Car just gets buried.
I, I logic when I was mayor and we set all this up was that when Tony goes out and does the snow removal, he gets the license number. He writes it down, and when he is done with the snow removal, he brings it in, gives it to Deb, and she looks it up because she, she has to have all that information when the ticket is actually issued. Then they go out and issue a ticket. Rather than stopping the snow removal and issuing the ticket, continue the snow removal. Yeah, they may get it moved before you get back out there, but then they have gritted out the snow where their vehicle was, and maybe that's proof enough, I don't know.
There was...
I just, I didn't want them to be stopped there. The snow removal, to do a ticket.
They, I, I checked with them several times during the snowstorm last year, and there wasn't any parking issues if they had.
Okay. So we'll just leave Deb having the access to it then?
Okay, look at it.
Okay.
And typically, we only issue tickets if they, if the snow pile has to move around it. If you're doing the travel lanes down on the street, because that's all that exists, and the cars are parked off onto the grass, they can take out their own vehicle.
Departmental reports.
Tidily?
We didn't vote on...
Vote on, oh, I'm sorry. We did not vote on the discussion action on nuisances, tabling into August, so... Joel?
Yes.
Doug?
Yeah.
Ken?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yeah.
Sue?
Yes. I'm done with mine. If Dale, if you want to go back through, and do you want my list, then?
Uh, I figured I would just go through it and see it, and then we can all combine to compare.
Okay.
Yep.
You want the addresses, so it's easier to write up your notes.
Well, yes.
Oh, make them to...
I don't know where mine's at. Mine's got the address, it's bringing it on.
I hope you shared the spreadsheet so that people could just put it right.
That's where they should go. That's where they should go. But I assume with Sue that I might be assisting her in that process.
Oh, Deb helped me with mine. I put, I put the photo right in mine.
So...
Did you get that done?
Most of it.
On the sheriff's report, uh, sorry, we're going back to departmental reports.
Yep.
Monthly town hours for the city of Maxwell for the month of June was forty-two point three-three. Uh, that is, is that the total? Their patrol time was twenty point three-five. Their calls for service was twenty-one point nine-eight hours.
So that's ten hours a week? If they spent forty hours in the month, that's ten hours a week.
Yes.
And where you could look at it as two hours a day. Since they have the weekend off.
Yep. Not the same service that City of Gilbert gets, got a hundred and twenty-four this month. But comparable with the major.
Gilbert mustn't be cameras.
What's that?
Gilbert mustn't be cameras.
Yep.
Hundred and twenty-four hours.
All right.
If we, if we had cameras, we'd have many more hours because the sheriff would be done.
Does anybody want to see the service report? Oh, one other thing that was on there that wasn't on there last, when we asked the sheriff last month, was if we could do some door checks. Some door checks were, in fact, maybe this is a pick and place, so... On to the fire department. Fire meeting, June seventeenth. Called the ward seven, no business. They critiqued trash fire, false alarm, and a fire smell, control burn, a shed fire, a big campfire. Firemen's convention is coming up in September. VADA is hosting a railcar incident response August seventeenth. VADA is burning a house the thirtieth. I know that they went to that one. They voted to buy a brush guard for seven oh nine. The firefighters association will be covering that cost. They had a resignation by Mr. Massey.
Do we have to vote to remove somebody, or are they just removed? Okay, thank you.
On to...
EMS.
EMS. Ten paid outs for Maxwell. They responded to ten, one to four per call, one to two, five person assists. City of Maxwell had five, Indian Township had five, none of Washington. EMS monthly meeting training attendance was eight. CQI, monthly track check was completed. The CQI was completed by Story County Medical. No maintenance needed, and nothing needed from city council. To the library, nope, EMS meeting. Called the ward on the twenty-fourth, six oh nine. Old business, trying to get more info on how calls are being routed. Image trend is going better with new changes. Ryan and Jamie had a few more suggestions. Call discussion, general, general reminder that if it's a suicide call, it needs to stage and wait for the deputies to arrive before entering.
What does that mean? They have to stage.
If there's a suicide, you don't know if it's true suicide, you still might have a gun. It's, it's a dangerous situation, so you just let the sheriff in first.
Stick with the stage.
Stage means we just hold back. So, so we might be a couple blocks away from the call.
Okay.
And, and then once the deputies get there...
You respond, but you don't go on, enter the problem. Correct.
Yep. Because it could be a dangerous situation, like I said. Same thing with domestics.
Let the guy with the gun go in first. Okay?
On the library, library board report, total one hundred and fifty-five books, forty-four movies, total attendance was two forty-six, seventy-three children, hundred and forty-six adults, twenty-seven in D-class, bridges had a hundred and sixty-seven total, seventy-one are old. Computers was nine adults, fifteen children. Current events, story time is continuing weekly, Monday and Thursday at ten. Summer reading program, July eighth, tenth, and twelfth. Purchasing items for building upgrades, completed remodel, still works. Items for sale for public on the statewide library site. The head, Jill Leonard, approved and joined the board. Sheriff Rink will resign from the board at the end of July. One application on file, posted advertising proceed. Upcoming events, website training, updating, changing DVD checkout system, policy reviews, paying book returns to be done by day of K. And my library membership expired, I need to get back up to time. Maxwell Public Library, agenda board of trustees. Director's report, they have carrying projects with the landscaping to bed in front of the library and painting the book drop. Friend, summer, the summer barbecue on June seventh was a huge success, refunds coming from sponsorships, donations, and meal purchases. Focus of the fundraiser was began saving for new bookshelves. Grants, and has decided not to submit a grant to Rob Seaco at this time, to keep that grant in mind for next year. Business. Discussion on training of the personnel policy.
So they have their own separate personnel policy in addition to the city's personnel policy?
I guess so.
Well, the library board is independent and they hire staff, so maybe their personnel policy supersedes the cities. Interesting question.
It is interesting. Want me to question for the attorneys?
Or for the library? How do they see their... We don't agree, or if nobody's thought about it, then yeah, maybe worth an attorney question. I'm sure that the state library board has looked into this, and so we could probably save our own attorney fees just by having the library tell us what the official legal position is.
Do you want me to ask Anna?
Please.
Yeah.
I trust her.
Two, they voted in discussion on the budget, spending funds for materials and wishless items to finish out the budget. Board approved the proposal for new construction to install the new front door this month. And Jill Leonard would have been approved, yeah. So they'll have another board seat, they'll be vacant. They've been working on accreditation to complete before January twenty twenty-five. So that would be it. No public works?
No, my public works and my fire chief forgot.
On the city clerk, Cherry had park and open spaces board meeting. They had training with Silver Smith, GIS mapping, end of month, end of quarter, end of fiscal year, end of sanity. New budget year is up and running, and look at that fancy nice new printer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Discuss that now.
I like that board out front that says, working on the sewers.
Clothes are torn, maybe clothes are torn.
Sit with caution.
I think I forgot your clothes, buddy, there.
Yeah, they were down like you.
Too high.
Um, also, just a FYI, um, Kathy Smith got another Prairie Meadows grant for the playground inclusive renovation project.
Thanks, great.
For the renovation now. It's a ten thousand dollar grant.
We don't care. We love it.
Well.
Bringing the inclusiveness.
Cameras. Is it going to result in, uh, the city also spending money?
Very possibly.
Because ten thousand dollars, uh, doesn't, isn't go very far with playground equipment.
Right.
And if it has to be inclusive playground equipment, then, uh, that means that, uh, there are certain design standards.
Swing.
And we can't use it for just.
Seven hundred?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand?
For the swing.
That's why?
Yep.
Hope, I hope.
Yep. All right.
And then, um, some of yous already received this message, but Melissa from Story County Emergency Management would like to come down and talk to us about, um, what emergency management is and how it works. So she can, says she can do it on a regular meeting if that's okay with you guys.
September meeting.
September meeting.
Do you wanna tell her that?
That'd be good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, cleanup day income breakdown. Uh, we collected a total of a hundred and forty dollars plus twenty-dollar donation. Pratt sanitation was, uh, thirty-yard roll-off, managed street for eight twenty-five, fuel surcharge was thirty bucks. And then our tonnage was two, four, five, uh, five and a half tons. And the total cost to us was twelve thirty. And that included the one container from Car Country for steel. And I think that was under our budget in the month.
I think we're fifteen, so.
Sorry?
Yeah.
All right, on to budget report, final.
Yes, I know, I haven't changed the titles on my budget and my. My, my county or my treasure report. I'll get to them, really. Promise.
Oh, it was nice to see that our budget was under a hundred percent on all categories.
That was what I saw.
I really struggled on a couple of them. We do still have to do some transfers.
From fire, the mayor.
Yeah.
We're wet.
We still do have to do some transfers, but you guys have to quit me having meetings so I can actually sit down and figure the transfers.
No meetings till August. Stop, we're already.
We, at the last meeting, we decided that, uh, we were gonna, uh, do two payments a year.
We had talked about it, but I don't think we ever decided on it.
And the reason for that is because one payment a year in December means that what we budget, uh, we're budgeting, uh, for a calendar year, but our fiscal year is, uh, July to June. And so our payment is for half of the previous budget year and half of the current budget year. The other half of the bu- current budget year is paid the following year. Well, if we change it so that we do a payment in, uh, December and do a payment in June, then it stays within the, uh, budget cycle. It's not terribly onerous.
So it's something we could look at after first of year, right? Because that would correct it if we made another payment before June. Because that would correct.
And we're already screwed because we're short on it for June.
Yep.
But, so we, now we have as much time as we want, uh, to decide if we want to, uh, have two payments. Uh, it's too late to, uh, post date anything, right? Because you close the books.
Um, I can backdate. They, they frown on paychecks, backdating, but transfers I can't backdate.
Paycheck you can, but you get your hands wet.
Maybe, yeah. They don't, they don't like that.
I think it's something that we maybe put on our August agenda. And then now that we can have it set so that the payments come out December and June of next year. December this year, June of next year, that'll leave us clean for the fall.
I think it makes more sense this year.
This year's gonna leave us behind.
Well, we'll have eighteen months in the current budget year.
Yep.
If we have the ability to backdate now, a, uh, now.
Well, we'd have eighteen months of this, of last year's.
The.
Yeah, it's not that strong already.
How much?
Yeah, either side of it.
Paying now or payment later.
We were at ninety-four, we have an unexpendable nine thousand dollars.
Pleasantly easy for him to take.
Under.
Under the.
Under that category. Yes, the mayor council will be more over than it is, however. Nine thousand dollars, uh, does that cover half of year's worth of meetings a, uh, uh, half of mayor salary?
You guys had nineteen.
Huh?
You guys had nineteen meetings this half of the year.
Nineteen this half of the year? So nineteen times five times thirty-five, right? Is it thirty-five?
Forty-five.
Twenty-five.
It's twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
That was forty-five.
Uh, too bad.
No, it's only twenty.
But not, not everybody was here for all those meetings. That's the worst case situation.
Eighty percent. Use eighty percent.
Use eighty percent?
That'd be four people out of five. That's probably what we average.
Oh, I don't know.
No, we might be stronger.
Four and a half.
Four and a half, ninety percent.
Okay. So, uh.
Twenty-five hundred for you guys.
Times five.
I didn't say anybody.
Twenty-five.
I'm just jealous.
Twenty-one hundred dollars, uh, was another thousand. So it looks like with the nine thousand dollars, we would be just fine.
It's hard to know that I did not make you all this work.
And we'd have half of the fire chief and half of the EMS chief.
Another two thousand.
Huh?
That'd be another two thousand, right?
No, only half, half of each.
No total of two thousand.
No, they each had a thousand.
I thought we gave them most of fifteen.
But that's until July one.
Did we bump them up?
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right.
Not officially.
We didn't.
You guys haven't passed a resolution to do that yet.
Oh, we, uh, we just added it to the budget.
Put it in the budget.
All right, so we'll have to make a resolution. And that's next month's agenda, please.
We haven't, we haven't seen any. We haven't seen any, you know, reviews to raise ours at.
I don't know. There's someone listed things to do this week, though. Somebody listed things to do last week, but we didn't have that either.
So I'm a commotion that, uh, since we have adequate funds, that we, uh, go to paying, uh, twice a year and that, uh, we backdate the checks, uh, for, uh, the end of last fiscal, the last six months of, uh, last fiscal year, uh, so that it, the, they account to the correct fiscal year. I'll say again. I'm not gonna go with the math.
Further discussion.
I think it makes sense to put it in the fiscal year rather than calendar year.
Sue?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Eric? Steve?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
My first, uh, departmental report motion.
That's true. This is what happens.
All right, on to the new budget report. Uh, yep, pretty clean, zero.
Loose eggs.
What did we do enough for the.
Well, it shouldn't have been clean, but I couldn't get through my stuff today, so.
It's all right. It helps us look and see what, where we are at.
Well, this, yeah, it should, it should, well, yeah.
I did a, I did a filling today, so there should have been some on there today.
But normally.
Normally.
It would have looked like this. It would have been zeros because it's the previous month, and there is no previous month to this month in this fiscal year. It would be all zeros. If we met on the first Tuesday of the, or Wednesday of the month. Anyway. Traders' report, we still have some negatives, and I need to work on doing a, uh, uh, resolution to wipe out those negatives on the, uh, capital fund project for the stormwater and the removal of trees.
Well, they haven't, uh, removed the trees.
Nineteen hundred.
No, for next year.
I mean, uh, both of those shouldn't get, uh, filled in from, uh, the, uh, lost local option sales hats, because they were community betterment.
Since we have, uh, who's our bond attorney?
Alan.
Alan.
Oh, Alan.
Jason.
Since we've had recent contact with them and communication and since they're, we're paying them again, do you think we could ask about if they could research the tax increment financing transfer into a new tax increment financing transfer or a new tax increment financing use?
Uh, yeah, the, it's an additional expense over and above the contract that they.
Yep.
We just approve.
Okay.
The last section of their contract says, yeah, I'd be happy to do anything else you want us to do as long as you pay for it.
We'd probably consider that part of our attorney fees. It'd be nice to be able to wrap that into new development.
Yes.
All right, on to. Good evening. All on street reconstruction. Alternative sewer outlet costs to stay within the fine, uh, street, Rock Creek will be present at the council meeting for consideration. Contracts are being signed. Contract is signed. Uh, work is anticipated to be hit shortly. Reconstruction date meeting is currently being coordinated. Snyder is assisting with acquisition of temporary easements. Uh, water treatment, wastewater discharge final compliance by twenty-seven. Planning and design loan application is completed and will be submitted upon receipt of city's signatures. Plumbering design is ninety-five percent complete. Plumbering design plans will be submitted to the city for review, completion, and before proceeding with final design. City of Snyder is evaluating alternative modifications to the plant improvement, which will be provided for this city review as soon as possible. Farm water, wood lawn, preliminary design is complete. Preliminary construction drawings will be submitted to the city for review and comment upon resolution of minor outstanding design flaws. Ever. Uh, Rock Creek, Ridge Estates Lot Two, developer is actively working with city and Story County for funding assistance and is retaining Snyder Development Group for preliminary design work. Developer has not released Snyder to start design work yet. Story County Heart of Iowa Trail, construction is proceeding. Contact Spencer, any questions? Twenty-four engineering services, scope and services for general city engineering services is, is in development. Particular languages, services, requirements, requests, please feel free to provide info on those and we can address those. Does anybody have anything on that that they want to add or be specific on? Kind of want to see what their contract says and then review it and make changes. It's my thought process.
Uh, water, Snyder's done a great job from what they've put the last twenty years, so.
But we pay them dearly.
Yeah.
Now, I'm, I've heard comments and I, you know, I've only been on for a few years. I've heard comments, why are you guys paying Snyder to do that? You know, so I don't know if it's, I hate to go someplace different because everybody's, they got all their.
Well, they're involved in everything we got going.
You get a new guy in the area that doesn't know the name of the streets, like, they do.
Well, one of the things that's often forgotten about is that people, citizens can often forget that government is held to a higher standard. So when we do work, our work has to be by the code, by the book, to the team, because we don't have the opportunity to skate or slide. So we don't, and we're not trying to. We don't want to skate or slide. The rules, we wanna be upright and forthcoming. Uh, water treatment plant review, developing a testing plan, recommendation to gather data for use in evaluating options for treating well free to a point where it can be reliably used as a water source. Um, on to parks and open spaces board. Event on June nineteenth, disc golf project is on pause pending changes to the yard waste location. New design will then be explored. Uh, didn't know if that was an issue. We still need photo of an inclusive swing in use for our grant report. If anyone has young people who would like to be in a photo, please let Jody know. Thank you. Signed to donors, ready to go. Should have been down there yesterday. I saw him. Somebody was using it. All the twelve trees from the one million trees, the Lion Energy and Trees Forever grant now have been, have the watering rings to take care of their water requirements and to be filled by school staff. Pinow, beautiful grant project, church stand painting has been completed. Special thanks to four H Club and the Methodist Mission Group who put in marathon hours to scrape, prime and paint. Congratulations. It looks beautiful and cared for. Just need to get our completed final paint work and an extra special thank you to Center Grove Orchard for donating pies for snacks for the work crew. Be sure to stop there in the city park for it all. I was under those pies. That's kidding. Uh, Heart of Iowa Bike Trail work has started. Trees are being cleared where necessary for the new ten-foot wide trail. So as soon as the story time and conservation work is completed, we can begin on new trail enhancements. Uh, we're giving up for, to get silhouettes and the dark parts repainted. Ooh, we talked about that already.
Well, she's, she's talking about the ones that are down there now.
Which now we have.
Now we have more.
The originals, I think those are the original cutouts for what was down there, so if she wants to make more.
Well. Susie has more in her garage.
But they're different.
That never got, that never got mounted.
Oh, okay. All right, I was kidding. I thought, I just figured they were the originals.
Okay.
Um. Some of the play equipment in plywood, um, just learned on July. Just learned on July tenth that there will be a reimbursement, no match treat grant available for fall. Are we interested? Application due August twenty-sixth. Absolutely.
You're gonna let Jody know?
I'll, I'll leave that in council member gas.
The only concern that I have on these tree events is we can get them, we can get them planted. And every, everyone that we plant is taking staff time to go out there and water. And the way they're watering is with the attack truck and he sprays until he estimates five gallons worth and then moves on. Hopefully that is adequate, we add another bunch of trees. The trees that he, we did in twenty twenty-two no longer have to be watered because we have to water it for the first uh, two years. And so adding more means that, yeah, we have more trees to water, hopefully they can drop off. It's just a lot more work than I thought it would be. The, I have also heard very positive comments about the three trees that were saved by cutting out those other trees behind it, those three trees to stand out. So the lighting on them is even going to be that much more dramatic. So.
Told by where the markers were at down there, that's going to be a nice location for that to come across that way too.
Yeah. What was it, further north, I think was a good move.
All right. On to council mayor reports. Steve.
I don't have anything. Working on the finances. Touring my area. Taking vacation.
My area is done, I just have to get it in the right format, but I have all of the information and ready to go on to the check. And I have one other thing. If we can't get this thing settled with old settlers fireworks, there should be no fireworks in the city. Because this is the second year in a row that I find the remains of fireworks in my backyard. One within five foot of my house. And then I went out the next day. This in the street. These by the school in the parking lots. Why can't we have a professional fireworks man take care of their, take care of fireworks for the city to see? Forget about all of this garbage left over. If we can't do it with a professional, then nobody should be able to do the fireworks. This is, it was in my backyard. And I threw another one away.
The Republican legislature made it so that people couldn't do fireworks. That's the end of the story.
That doesn't mean that we can't do.
Yeah, it does.
So a city can restrict fireworks, however, I will tell you that by restricting fireworks, you're going to have more issues, more, more calls to the, to the sheriff's department that they're not going to be able to respond to anyway.
Right.
And it's just gonna, it's just gonna bog down the system.
We're just gonna have to have a house catch on fire or something like that when these idiots that are out there not knowing what they're doing.
Even if, even if you restrict them in the city, they're still going to happen.
What about, Des Moines just changed theirs.
And did you see how many times, how many, how many calls?
I know that, but then they set, they set fines if they're caught anywhere, like in the parks. There's, there's, there's restrictions that can be made.
The other thing was that they couldn't.
But who's going to enforce it?
I will.
Right, we, we, we've already, we, our meetings are completely filled with things that we can't enforce because we don't, we don't have law enforcement here. And so to add on another.
Quite frankly, even if we did have law enforcement, it's still.
There's not that much area to cover and it's pretty much the same people every year. They have parties.
As the sheriff report shows, two hours a day is what we get.
Even if we had our own police, it still wouldn't be.
No, because you're going to be, that one officer that's on duty is going to be over here and they're going to be firing off fireworks over here. Then by the time he drives over here, they're going to be firing them off over there.
Can I take pictures of families in the backyard with kids lined up with not firecrackers, not, not sparklers?
What law have they violated?
Right.
What law have they violated?
With a ten-year-old kid, that's child endangerment.
No, that's their own. That's their own, the, the law says that if you are on your property then you can fire off fireworks. The fact that it lands on somebody else's property may be something that you as an individual could take to court, but the police aren't going to go out there and watch.
You'd be better off working with your, with your neighbors and saying, hey, can you come over and pick up this stuff out of my yard? You, you fired them, you cleaned them up.
The school, I mean, it was in the west parking lot, it was all over in the street.
If they aren't on their own property, it is a state law violation and the sheriff has to come down if you call them and.
I will remember it, but just think, the dogs, I mean, my dogs wouldn't go outside at night for the, two days after. They're petrified.
My woodpecker didn't show up for three days.
Now my parents.
See him out there every night, but those three days he wasn't out there.
If somebody is if somebody is firing off fireworks on the street, then they're not on their own property. If they're firing it in the school parking lot, they're not on their own property. The law says on your property, you have the right to fire off fireworks.
So when you watch next year and see who's in that west.
I'm not around on the Fourth of July, I leave town because the thing drives me crazy.
Yeah, oh, think about the kid that has autism. It's all, it's crazy, all the fireworks going off at midnight even.
And that's illegal too?
Yeah, well.
After, what is it, after eleven o'clock at night?
We, yeah. And maybe, don't make it the whole flipping month of July.
And at Christmas too.
The New Year's. The Republican legislature is what empowered this.
And the Democrats, the names that are charging us more bird garbage.
Touche.
Pass this around. What do we do about something like this? Let that on me. Let me see if I can find it, there. What do we do about something like that? That's child endangerment as far as I'm concerned.
Well, then call Child Services.
They're not gonna do it, they're gonna.
No, they won't.
Okay. But they're the ones.
Yeah.
Is that the one with the little kid?
The kid. She's driving along beside.
Oh, I seen that one.
I think that's child endangerment, if something would happen to that child, how was she gonna stop and get out and take it? No, I'm, that's sheer stupidity.
I agree.
And you can't fix it. That's stupid.
That's, sure.
Needs better sidewalks.
Let's drive the ATV zone.
She's doing everything she can.
It's wrong, but it's a daily thing, and then she goes down and crosses two ten with that kid on that little just infuriates me as a parent.
Joel? Did you have any else to?
No, I'm done with my. I won't, I won't finish that.
We had our budget wishes twenty twenty-six that, I, I have a question, what is employee assistance program? That was the first thing.
The EAP, being able to offer the employees, it falls to the substance abuse policy where we can offer them assistance, that we basically provide a service where.
School didn't have that? I don't know, we had it a fine year.
Like if they have a mental health.
Oh, all right, okay, okay, now I know what you're saying.
We can help them out by giving them, like, they get three visits or whatever.
Yeah, okay, guys, all right.
So it's just a provided program.
Okay. And then some of these other things, I added my own just because I don't know what priorities are.
That's what it's for.
So I added just for the heck of it. Uh, the food program, community that, you know, Collins had that last year when Meg was on the council. Again, we were looking into that, I don't know if we ever looked into it, I think it's a nice program and, but it provides food, it was twice a week, I think. And I don't know who or what.
Wasn't, are you talking about the suckers?
Those supper meals, yeah.
Yeah, and I think it was only.
Was it just once a week? Oh.
I think it might have only been once a month, but, and it was only a certain amount.
Anyway, that might be worth like looking into. Uh, Woodlong water problem, signings and markings for the Heart of Iowa Loop, if we do our Loop in Town, just some things that I put as equally high or higher than some of the other things on the list. Uh, brief needs and repairs on city buildings. In reality, we ended up spending several hundred dollars, even though we had the grant for the painting, the food stand down there. Have we assessed the needs? It probably should have been done many years ago. Cause it took a whole lot of work to get that done. But maybe checking around and seeing what buildings we own that do need some assistance and.
Cause I think I had it on there that I asked the, well, I don't think it's on there, I've asked Tony and Scott to review equipment, so, so that equipment review becomes part of this.
The facilities.
Because those are the types of things we run into, like we're asking for a skid loader. Well, it's nice to know that prior to budget season. It's nice to know where, where it is and what we actually need when budget season comes in.
How many hours are on it, what's the problems where?
Sometimes they have to look for more than just six months before budget.
Right, right.
Yes.
Two years.
Yeah, and, and that's ultimately what that was about, was providing that opportunity for us to put those things out there that we can consider with budget, because I couldn't tell you the number of things that got brought up right after we gathered a budget that, hey, I want ten thousand for this, I want ten thousand, I want eighty thousand, but.
Yeah.
We don't have it.
No.
We can't, we're just gonna tell you no.
And we need to know four, five years in advance so we can start grab hauling money for those.
And that's what I said when, when I first got on here, it was like for the fire trucks.
Yes.
They have, so like a fire truck is, is normally like twenty years. So you can, you can look at the fire trucks that we have now and go, well, in twenty years, they should be replaced, well. For, we're past that, yeah, we're past that. So, so, you know, I mean, even like, um, for instance, the Tahoe, you know, they say, they say that's like five to seven years. I don't think we're going to need to push it that, that soon because.
Is that being used like the one down?
Right, right. So we, we could actually make that go out a little longer.
Yeah, yeah, but those kind of thoughts. Market in the Park highlighted the fact that that gravel down there is not good, we need to do something different there for people with wheelchairs or handicapped accessibility on that gravel, it's very difficult, just throwing some stuff in the air.
We should pave it.
Yep, shouldn't be sealed coated because it's already got a base.
Yes, it would be ready to do. Uh, the pedestrian lights, the school crossing things, we've got a two block with lights and signs, but they're two blocks apart there on Fifth Street. Same thing on the one right north of the Presbyterian Church. There's pedestrian crossing marks, but they're not at one intersection, they're two blocks apart. Going east, you're on Maxwell Street, going west, it's on Metcalf.
That's one block.
But two intersections.
Two intersections.
Two intersections.
One block apart.
Yeah, normally they're put in one intersection, that's the designated area, but we need to talk to the school and decide what, which one they want to be called, the front door, the access kids coming down to, it may be different now than what it, what it used to be.
Absolutely, I, I think they still want kids to walk down Metcalf because that's where they get on the bus. Not just going to the building, they don't.
They get on the bus in the Circle Drive, which ends up dumping onto Maxwell.
Maxwell, yeah.
Okay.
But coming in, when we bring kids back from Collins, we come down Metcalf and then go around, but that's not, that's not where we want the kids, because that's where buses are driving.
You just come down Metcalf and then turn.
And then go around the building on the south and then loop up to the Circle Drive. But those are the things, and let me hit the last couple. Cleaning up our nuisance property is going to be a costly issue. I've got probably four or five major, long-term individuals that are going to be like the gas station Conoco was up there, it's going to take litigation and costs. And then worrying about well three, that was the other thing I had. That how much money we're gonna have to put in there, which in my mind ranks higher than, than some of the things on that original list. One little short thing though, the bathrooms have been remodeled and we know there's still vandalism. But then we used to have signs on it, male and female, but now there's no signs and that one door opens real hard that people think it's in use and it isn't, but maybe before old settlers, we need to get boys and girls or male and female back on it, it has been suggested by a couple of people.
Have it.
What if I don't identify?
Yeah, there you go.
Is, is there, is there any difference between the two?
Yeah.
There's a urinal in one?
Correct, and not yet.
Okay.
And traditionally, the south one has been the men's and that's where the urinal is.
Yeah.
They then have a urinal and.
That wouldn't matter, they can be unisex, that's right. Okay, so that was my thought.
It's like Starbucks.
Deb, can you see about finding some signs?
Sure.
Please, thank you. All right. So like Doug was talking, I just, I put that out because of, it helps for me to have things that I can refer back to when we're trying to review and go over things, when we're trying to make long-term decisions. It helps if we have an understanding of what we need and where we need it. So we, it's just a tool that we can build on, everybody can add to, we can review when budget season comes in.
Did you put those on the?
It's on the God given and shared spread thing, yes.
Okay. Okay. Because just having a list of, gee, I'd like to have this has always frustrated me because it is a what? But you then have to have a now, a so what and a now what. The so what is, how much is the cost? And what are the details of it? And the now what is when we're going to do it?
Proportion.
Having just a what doesn't do anything for anybody, so if you have a list of things out there, then let's get some scale to it. Say it's going to cost X number of dollars. That's what I did on all of them that I had out there for the last, I don't know how many years, you know, just kind of said, okay, if, uh, we're going to build the, the road down to, or sidewalk down to Dollar General. Well, what does that take? You're gonna have to have a base, you're gonna have to have, uh, earth movement. And you can get estimates for that on, online and put together at least something of scale. Which then everybody looks at and says, oh, we can afford it. Put together at least something of scale, which then everybody looks at and says, oh, we can afford that.
Alright, so I had Micah reach out, which is the, she's a Maricor member, Iowa Community Corps. And they asked for permission to park their, uh, food pantry truck at the Freedom Rock. And without council approval, I gave that approval. It is July twenty-third from one to three, and they would like to continue it and they are accepting donations and they're also offering food pickup. So if families in need, if you know a family that needs, uh, food pantry assistance, have them stop down there.
Doesn't the Presbyterian Church still have, have a, uh, all the churches use the Presbyterian Church basement as a food pantry?
Yeah, but I think it's just once a month that they're open.
Right.
We do have at the, Methodist Church has the cupboard that is stocked all the time that gets quite a bit of use there. That's primarily done by the, the people in the church there.
Okay.
So there's another source.
So.
And this works in conjunction with the two churches, how?
I don't know that it does.
I don't think it does.
It doesn't have any to do with it, this is just an additional opportunity.
Okay.
And there was something that was at the school and it's going to be several times that's for eighteen years.
School, you just bag every week for the weekend.
Yeah, but it's, you have to be eighteen and under, it's only for students.
But they can eat every day up there too.
Yeah.
They had lunch every day. Um, so anyway, this has shelf-stable items, uh, fresh produce and perishable foods, uh, and it's available to anyone in need. Families can receive one food box per month, um, rescue items available daily. So it's just another opportunity to provide assistance to communities.
And they're parking where at the Freedom Rock?
Uh, off, off a trotter, either on the side of the road or.
On the south end of it?
Either, either on the south end or north end, I'm not sure whether they're gonna park on the street or whether they're gonna take up multiple parking spots.
I prefer that they take up multiple parking spots at the south end so they're not directly in front.
Yeah.
Or the food truck always sat when she brought it in?
Yeah.
Um.
Is that something we can put on the sign so people know?
Yes, I have, uh, printouts that I need to get delivered, dropped around town, so.
And then that internet?
Yeah. Um.
When, when you said. Of the, they.
You meant, you meant the south side, I was thinking the east or the west, they could, they could do it behind Casey's as well on the side of the road, but.
Is that no parking? I can't have any reference whether that's.
I would put them on the west side, where the food truck used to be on the west side. And the parking spaces.
Just south of.
Five or six parking spaces or whatever.
And far south as they can.
Okay, I'll let her know.
Between the tank and. No.
No.
Further south.
Further south.
We got, we got spaces, got five or six spaces south of the, the, uh, tank. So if the food, if that van, whatever it is.
That red truck sits in.
Sits as far south as possible, then, okay, there won't be in front of the Freedom Rock straight down.
Alright, um, outside of that, I don't think I have enough on here. Nothing else I have covered, so.
What about tents? He hasn't had a tent.
Why isn't that stupid?
I don't know, but, let me start reading what I have.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, hope it's multiple pages.
Nothing, nothing.
I have a question. What was the final outcome on old settlers fireworks thing?
We don't have anything to vote on.
She had good shoes. Here or something else, the parade permit, I thought it was with that.
So.
Do you have something else?
No, I can't remember. I, my guess is that the liquor permit and fireworks permit will come in in a few days. And we will be asked to have a special meeting to approve those to I. So I would, I would suggest that, uh, council members keep that in mind if there may be any special meeting.
And if there's a special meeting, we'll attach some bonus stuff on it.
About three and a half hours.
We will be three and a half hours.
By, uh, our.
I moved to a.
The, uh.
A second.
Can, uh, Phil Supat.
Yeah.
Sue Philpot, uh, attend by phone.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I was just wondering if we could do it that way as we have, you know, this and this and this and.
Have attended meetings by phone, by floor, so.
Yeah, yeah, so if you need to, feel free to do it.
Yeah.
Well, I just thought that might be an easier thing rather than coming in here and doing all.
Me, me personally, I just.
Somebody has to be here, so.
It's gotta be posted to the public meeting.
Yep.
Oh, it does, okay.
Well, but that means that you could do it by phone, cause it's a posted.
And when we do it, I may be at Cal Farm.
Uh, on the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve and a second.
Our second.
Yeah.
Further discussion, anybody eligible?
Nope.
Alright. Sue?
This is the vote on the consent agenda, not your turn.
No, my turn.
Doug. Steve.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Doug.
Yeah, I still say yes.
Maybe ask me yes.
Now you didn't get old.
It's your turn, Sue.
My turn, Sue, I move Richard.
No, second.
Further discussion. Joel.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Doug.
I wrote it twice last time.
Doug, you're sane.
No, don't do that.
Yes. Get up, Robert's rules the board, see whether or not.